I call to order the April 11th meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which contains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Strange feedback coming here.
All right. Hey, it's great to be back, guys. Thanks a lot. And I want particularly to thank Frank for filling in for me. I mean, there's a difference between being on Zoom and being here in person. We'll talk more about that later, but thanks, Frank.
It'll be all right till you get my bill.
First item of business is the minutes from the March 14th public hearing and the March 14th regular meeting.
Move both of those, sir.
I got a motion and a second. Discussion amendments. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Now is the time for citizen comments. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about that is not on the agenda? Anybody at all? Yes, please.
Richard, can you come to the microphone? The microphone right there. Thank you.
I just want to say something to the people in the room here about some conditions in the world. I basically wanted to pay my respects and hope we all can for a few seconds at least to the people of Syria and now the people of Ukraine. It's something that's really affected me quite a bit.
New agenda items. So under the current legislation from the state, if we want to add anything to the agenda, now would be a time to bring that up. Anybody? Nope? Okay, we're moving right along. Township business, CADA update. You want to start this?
Sure. So we have representatives from CADA tonight who are going to discuss the funding for next year and also the service levels. CADA is proposing the elimination of the P route. Service provided by the P will be replaced with CADA GO. And I did ask the question about CADA RIDE, and Luana did confirm that we will get to keep CADA RIDE even if we don't have the bus out here, that they've changed that from last year. CADA is requesting a flat 5% increase from all of its members. CADA staff is also suggesting that a committee be formed to discuss the funding formula and how CADA GO can be worked into that because right now the funding formula does not take CADA GO into account. So I'll let Luana or whoever else wants to kick it off, and I have a presentation that I will share on my screen.
Do this with this presentation behind him.
See how we go.
Okay, wait a minute. I'm gonna sleep like this.
If you want to kick a chair out of the way and move over.
As long as I'm okay, like here, I can still see too.
They're fine, they're fine.
Okay.
Hang on, one second.
I know, the new setups and stuff, so.
Okay, now I'm gonna go back down. Okay.
So Amy, I guess you can go next. So what I figured I would do first is touch on the service changes that we're proposing for fall, get through that, and then talk a little bit about the local match concepts. And also, I have the experts here in the room for some of the service in case we have questions. So go ahead, Amy, you can go to the next slide. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about are two new routes that we're planning to introduce in the fall. So the first thing I'm going to say is that some of the issues that we faced last year with our service was a lack of bus operators. We have staffing issues across the board, just like everybody else, but what's usually most visual to the public is a lack of bus operators. So in order to do any of this in the fall, we have to get to 114 bus operators by May 1st because that's the last day that we can get them into a training class and have them ready to go for when we kick off service in the fall. If we don't get to the 114 in the fall, we're going to continue to recruit, and then hopefully we would be able to kick this off in January. So the connector routes, and they're going to tie into the Harris GO zone here in a little bit as I move along. So there are two connector routes that we're going to be introducing. So the first one is the Atherton Street Connector, and that's the Green Line. It runs from Scenery Park and it goes clear out to the Colonnade, and it connects with the Harris GO zone. That particular route would run 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. It would have 24-minute frequency, and it would run Monday through Saturday. The Purple Route is the College Avenue Connector, and it connects between CADA's offices in Ferguson and the mall on the other end. Both of these routes would connect in downtown State College so that you can transfer between the two routes, or you can transfer from any of our other services if you need to to get to these high-frequency routes. Let's see. The College Avenue Connector runs Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at a 24-minute frequency, and then after 8:00 p.m. it'll drop to a 30-minute frequency until 11:00 p.m. So this will tie in a little bit as I start talking about the GO zone. Go ahead and give us the next one. I only show this one just to show what our entire service looks like right now. There's been, as I've been talking about connector routes, some people have been thinking that we're dropping everything but the connector route, so I just show this to show what all the service will look like should we get to 114 drivers in the fall. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this one I wanted to talk a little bit about why we put GO service into Harris and just talk a little bit about access. So we had introduced the GO zone last year, in particular during COVID, when we had to cut back on services. What we found were that particularly Harris and Harris community, we had people that, because there's not a lot, you know, there's not sidewalks and those kind of things here, we had people walking down some pretty busy, high-speed interchanges to get to, stand alongside of a road to get to our P route. So we wanted to give the GO service a chance that was more of a curb-to-connection or curb-to-curb within the Bolzberg Zone to try and help with some of those things. And so what we have found is that there is actually, the access for Harris residents compared to when we just had the P to now with the GO zone has increased quite a bit. So previously, you can still see the P route there in the map. So previously, if you looked at sidewalks and road structures, about 31% of the Harris residents had access to the P within a 10% or 10-minute walk. Beyond that, people were walking longer than 10 minutes to get to that route to use it. But now with the GO zone, we are now serving, we now can serve 70.8% of your residents basically curb-to-curb or curb-todestination. So we've greatly increased Harris Township's residents' access to some level of transit service. And so we're estimating, we have some tools now that help us estimate population, but we, about 4,100 of your total residents now live within that GO zone and have access to that. The one thing that I wanted to point out, I talked a little bit about the connectors. So in the past during the pandemic, we've had the P and the XP, which the frequency has not been high enough for what we wanted to do when we kicked off a GO zone. So if we can hit that 114 drivers in the fall, the GO zone will connect at Scenery Park with those connectors. And so they'll have connections every 24 minutes, there'll be a bus that can get them downtown. And with that new Atherton Street Connector, without any transfers, your folks will be able to get all the way out to the Colonnade if they would like to on a very frequent service. We've also done some simulations about as far as like what our wait times are on GO, which is somewhere around eight minutes. So from the time someone schedules a trip on GO to the time that the bus arrives at the curb is about eight minutes right now. And what we're simulating, so as you can see, the P sort of winds all around. So with the GO zone service and the high-frequency connector route, most passengers will be able to probably carve three or four minutes off their total trip compared to connecting either the P or connecting with the XP. Okay, I just want to make sure I caught everything on this slide because there's a lot to see on this slide. Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, and next I wanted to show a little bit about the P. So these are the ridership on the P just within Harris Township. So of all the ridership on the P, 18% of the ridership is in Harris. The rest of the ridership on the P happens outside of Harris. So you'll see us, you'll see what looks like a big increase, but it's actually, if you look down the side here, it's a very small increase. So since the beginning of the year, we've gone from about 11 and 1/2 passengers a day on the P to about 13 and 1/4. So when you start getting into some of that, it's, well, you know, maybe somebody's taking some other way to get back, you know, maybe they're riding it in one direction and riding another service, or someone takes them, gets them back home. So what's important to remember too is that we actually run 11 trips a day on the P in Harris right now, and we're averaging about 13 passengers a day on that, on the P service. So this is showing the CADA GO zone ridership for Harris Township. And this is just Harris because it does touch on the edges, that GO zone does touch the edge of College Township as well, but this is the ridership for Harris. And what you'll see is that now the average daily ridership on GO is exceeding the P in Harris Township. So we are, I did, I forgot to make one point about the P route, I'm sorry. So on the P route, I did want to point out that those numbers that we're showing are just the people that are getting on the P within Harris. There is some level of people either from other areas or coming back into the areas who get often in Harris, but we don't typically do our counts, we do our counts by the person getting on, on the route, so. So with this, the CADA GO ridership continues to grow and is now exceeding the P ridership. Our daily average is getting, for March, you can see, is getting very close to 18, where we provided in the month of March 464 trips on GO in the month. I will tell you that for the first week of April, we are now exceeding 20.5 trips on GO. So it continues to grow. I wanted to, so this is a sort of a heat map of where the ridership is happening in the GO, or from the Harris GO zone in the connection points. As you can see, the major destination is the grocery stores, the Giant and the Wise in Scenery Park. But you can also see that there are some growing, the red dots are starting to grow around some of the businesses as well in Harris. I will also let you know that right now of all of those rides, so in March, the 400 and some trips that were going on, 20% of those rides were happening within. So the person was getting on the GO service and getting off the service within Harris Township. So you are getting some inter-Harris trip generation from that. I'll let you go ahead, Amy. Thank you for being my slide advancer. So one of the things that we've been looking at in the existing GO zones that we have is looking at how the service is being used to get to businesses. And one of the things we want to do is also like work with the businesses to help them understand and figure out how to market the fact that that service is there to get people to their businesses. So the numbers aren't, you know, they're growing, we're still, we're still in a brand-new pilot here in Harris. But the three largest are the Military Museum, the Wyndham Hotel, and the Bolzberg Mart. But you can also see that some of the, we're starting to see ridership to some of the other businesses as well within Harris. So this is our CADA RIDE slide because I did want to make sure we touch on the different services that are happening here in Harris. So what this does is it shows a little bit about the usage of CADA RIDE within Harris by Harris residents. And this is from July 1st, '21 through the end of February when we had captured this data. And what we've done down the one side is sort of break it down by age. So CADA RIDE is a service that is for people over the age of 65, and it's also for people who have disabilities that are to a point where it precludes them from using a fixed route bus. So what you're seeing here is that you have 22 residents that are using CADA RIDE within Harris, and those residents in that time period took 1,085 trips on CADA RIDE. The interesting thing that you'll see here too is sort of the fact that by age, the usage of the service is different. So when you're looking at the folks that are the 20 to 29 age, they're using it to get to education and employment. And then as you get to the older ages, they're using it for medical, personal, and shopping. So an interesting thing, you'll notice that the education employment bars are quite high, you know, they're a lot larger than the green bars. Part of that is, is if you're using a service to get to school or work, it's more of a, you might be going twice a day, three, four, five times a week, so you'll see more usage. Where somebody that's maybe going to a medical appointment or going grocery shopping, they might use it once a month or once a week. So I'll give you a little background there. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so I did want to just touch on Sunday service. On the CADA RIDE service, one of the points I did want to make, so even though there's no CADA GO service in Harris on Sundays, because you're in the, you're part of the core service for CADA, CADA RIDE still does operate on Sunday, so I did want to let you know that. So just to let you know what some of the services are though that outside of Harris that we are, that we are talking about reintroducing in the fall is to bring back both the evening and Sunday service. The routing will be different, we're just trying to get started, just try and put some of this back. So on the late-night service, in particular on the late-night service, we heard from people with jobs, with later shift jobs, particularly in the downtown area, that were really needing that service to come back. So the late-night service from Sunday through Wednesday, it will extend from, right now it ends at 11 o'clock, our service, it'll go till 12:30 a.m. And then Thursday through Saturday will go until 2:30 a.m. with these route, with this routing. And then on Sundays, we will run from 8:00 a.m. until 12:30 a.m. Both the late-night and the Sunday service will be about 30 to 35-minute frequencies, which is also a step up from where we were during pandemic, where we were on hourly frequencies. This slide, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, we have a public hearing open house on the 14th from 4:30 to 6:30 at the library. Unlike in the past when you used to do public hearings and everybody sat there and waited for their chance to get up to the microphone, we've been trying a new model of doing this, which we have found has been a lot more successful, partially because sometimes people are shy and don't want to get up in front of a microphone. But we can also talk to a lot more people. So what we do is we have stations so that when people come in, they can sit down, they can ask their questions about the service and give us their comments. We'll also have a station at the library where if you just want to better understand what's going on and what might happen, you can go to that table. I did want to point out too, I talked about the 114 drivers, and if we can't get there for fall, we'd be looking at January. The board did vote that even if we didn't get to the 114, that we would reintroduce Sunday service in the fall, and we're actually going to bring Sunday service back when we go into reduced service in May. May 8th, I believe, is the date. So I just wanted to make sure people knew how they could, the many ways that they can comment on this, the draft service for fall. So I don't know, Amy, do you want me to pause for questions on this before we talk local match, or? Okay.
Before I open it up, let me just ask for, you mentioned something, mentioned somewhat about CADA RIDE and, but draw the distinctions for us and for the people that are watching between our regular service, CADA GO and CADA RIDE. What are they, who do they serve, and how?
Great idea, thanks. So the P route is your fixed route service, and the fixed route service is on a certain time, and it stops at certain stops. So in order to use that service, you need to get to one of the stops, and that's how you ride it, and it connects into the other services that CADA offers. CADA GO, which is in a pilot here in Harris Township, uses a smaller vehicle. You can schedule those trips in a number of ways. The best way to schedule those trips is through an app, because if you schedule your trips through the app, you can actually, it gives you updates, and you can see where the bus is, and it updates you on when the bus is going to get to your house, so you can stay in your house, in the warmth of your house, and wait for the bus to get closer before you go out to the curb to meet it. There are no restrictions on using CADA GO. You just have to, you can either use the app, you can use a web portion on a computer, or you can call CADA to schedule those trips. And that can be done same day. You can get up that day and schedule it for a certain time, you can get up that day and call, and as Derek is saying, is typically there's an eight-minute wait between the time you schedule that trip and the time you go.
What's your cost on that?
It's the same as riding a fixed route, so it's the $2.20. And so, and then the last service is CADA RIDE, and CADA RIDE's more restrictive. It is, it's based on two different services. For people over 65, it's the lottery program through the state of Pennsylvania, and through the federal government, it is for people with disabilities that are at a level that they can't ride other services. And with that service, you have to schedule at least 24 hours in advance, and that fare is, remind me, Cindy, what's the fare on, $4? Thank you. The fare on that service is $4.
Yes, one-way.
Yes. Yes.
On the CADA GO and the regular, do seniors ride free for that CADA GO like they do the buses?
Yes. If you have that pass that qualifies you for free transit, again, that's another lottery program from the state of Pennsylvania, you also ride CADA GO for free with that, with that service.
Hold on, sorry. Also, I'm sorry.
You may, I try to repeat so that it's on the microphone, so you may want to come up here. This is why you bring the experts.
Just the one thing I wanted to add with CADA GO, you're, as you saw on the map here, all the people in that area now have direct access to Mountain Ene Medical Center and Center of Medical Science Building, which they did not have before. So that is a destination point on CADA GO.
Can you talk a little bit about what a destination point means?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, no problem. So you have, as you saw up there, you have the pink zone, so that inside that zone, anyone can go from curb to curb. And then you have destination points outside of that zone. So rather than curb to curb, you go curb to destination point. Those destination points include Mountain Ene Medical Center, Center of Medical Science Building, CVS Pharmacy, Giant, Wise, also a transfer point on Rolling Ridge, and then numerous, numerous places along Scenery Park, such as Sunpoint, and I'm not going to get them all.
I know.
Sunpoint Medical, Geisinger, Mountain Ene Eye, and I'm missing two of them. One is the Oral Care, and I can't remember the exact name, but there's two others in Scenery Park that they can get to. But those, so the destination points sit outside of that zone that we operate in, and they can only get to that specific destination point versus within the zone, they can just go wherever, curb to curb.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
The last time you were here, we were talking about the CADA GO. Were you in there specifically for copies of any written comments that people had submitted to you?
Did you not get those?
We have not, I haven't seen any.
Okay. Would you, rather than going back to last year, we can do the same thing right now with the comment, it might be more helpful to see the comment period right now?
Yeah, I think that would be great to see.
Yeah, we were interested in.
I apologize for that.
Tracking themes of those comments. Negative, positives, just general kind of, that would help us make a decision on 5%, okay? Flip through another page here. On the Bolzberg CADA GO zone ridership, you have 464, that's a, what is the trip?
A trip is being picked up.
From point A to point B?
Yes, yes.
And the vehicle size on the P has always been the full-size bus?
Yes, and it still is a full-size bus. So 18% of the ridership is in Harris, so the other, the other 82% is happening elsewhere along the route closer to downtown, so.
So that vehicle is filling up by the time it gets to point B?
The P is not a robust route, but it's too big to use a smaller vehicle.
I'm glad you used the robust because I walk a lot and I never see anyone on it.
You're the far end of it, and like I said, 18, only 18% of the ridership is here in Harris. That's part of the reason we looked at GO. We felt like GO was a better fit.
Can you give me an idea how the grocery delivery companies in the area have affected CADA ridership, or use of CADA?
I.
Whatever they call these.
Yeah.
Companies that DoorDash and those kind of things?
I don't know, because so much of our ridership prior to the, so the pandemic has like wrecked our data, you know, our data prior to the pandemic compared to what it is now, you know, we're constantly trying to figure out how much do we go back pre-pandemic, how much do we figure out what we should be looking at now. But most of the, you know, like when you're seeing the patterns, it's more employment patterns, and so a grocery trip is like maybe a once-a-week kind of thing, and I'm not sure I could actually drill down and know whether they're impacting us or not. But we are seeing decent ridership in the GO zone.
The convenience of Giant with people calling and grocery orders, someone picking them up and putting them in a car outside, I don't know if that's an individual or if that's a company that's doing that.
I don't know on Giant, I know in others, you can, you can do it one of two ways. There's a charge where they deliver it to your house.
Yeah.
Or you drive in and somebody, somebody has done your shopping for you and puts it in your, in your trunk. But I really, I don't have any correlations between that and ridership because pandemic has, you know, done so much, such a number on everything that it's hard to correlate anything.
I'm looking for some of the do grocery shopping for me, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Luana.
Sure.
Nigel, questions, thoughts?
Nope. Well, I don't have a lot of questions. Only comments, I have nothing to do with your route system, but, so you're telling me the P route is being eliminated in Bolzberg?
It's up as one of the comments that we're, we're hearing from people.
Okay.
We feel like at this point, we're moving to where GO is the better service.
That's okay, I was, I want to make that clear, that so if someone says, why is the bus, you're going to live, right, I, I don't see too many people want it either, so it makes sense, yeah. No, that's, as far as this is concerned, I have no comments.
Frank, anything else?
Yeah, just two quick questions. You said you need 114 operators in the fall. How many are we at right now? How many do you have to get?
We're optimistic we're going to get there.
Yeah, but I mean, how many do we have right now?
So I had 94, and I'm trying to, it's so, it fluctuates so much that I literally have to check in with my HR department to see where we are. I don't know, Derek, are you still? There you are. Do you know what the numbers are right now?
As of Thursday of last week, I believe we were at 106 or 107, and three offers just went out today, so.
That means one of them showed up. One of them showed up.
Well, actually, I would say that our, that percentage after January 1st has gone skyrocketing. It's the quality of applicants has changed drastically. I don't know what the, what's changed.
We have no idea what happened.
But we've been fortunate because that has changed.
Yeah. People are showing up and, in a good, in a good way. When we are hiring people, they're actually showing up the first day of training, they're staying through training. So that's why we feel pretty optimistic, we're going to make it to them. Well, they have to be in training by May 1st in order to be done and ready to start driving in the middle of August. So we, what we, what we've always done because of our location here is we actually help the person get their CDL as part of training.
CDL program too.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that, we have found that's the only way that we can attract drivers in this community is to actually help people get their CDL.
What was your driver number before the, before the pandemic? Were you at 115 or 120 or?
We had, we were trying to fill 140 positions, and I think we were at about 132 prior to the pandemic, so we're definitely a smaller organization.
So you lost, you had a heavy loss?
We had a heavy loss.
Layoffs and just?
We had layoffs that happened because we lost 97% of our ridership overnight. We were concerned because we're funded, almost 50% of our money comes from the fare box, and you lose 97% of your rides. We were heavily impacted on the financial side until some of the federal dollars came in to help us keep our doors open. And then it was just, we also have, we tend to have an older workforce, and a number of people decide. people decided that it was time to retire.
What's the longevity of your drivers? 20 years, 25 years?
We have, we have anywhere from, I'm trying to think, because again, things are changing now, we're bringing younger people in, but we have, we have drivers that have been, been here for more than 20 years.
Four years, we've had two drivers that had 40-plus years, we've had at least five that have over 30, and a couple over 20, so we, you know, they'd stay.
Good.
Yeah.
Two, two more quick questions.
Uh huh.
This, this is numeric, since they're ahead of us and they've done it before us. What's the, what's the number, like we're at 464 on CattaGo trips, what's Belfont's, where are, where are they at?
I'm going to bring him up again. But Belfont's still growing too.
Drastically different. So Belfont is, last month it was at 3,800. Now, 3,800, that was after, now that, they've been operating for two years too, so understand. So it, it has changed. Now, since in January, ridership from January to February increased by 61%. And then from February to March increased another 12%. And right now, and again, we're very early in the month, so understand that, right now we're actually, as LaWanna stated, where our ridership's average per day is higher than last month. And we had our highest day, last Tuesday, our highest day of 30 for the day. So it's, Belfont,
That's in Harris, right?
That's in Harris, yeah, yeah.
30, okay, yeah, Belfont's higher.
Belfont, and also the other thing that happened with Belfont is, two months after we started, the pandemic hit. And things, we, we, I, I can't even tell you how many times we changed the Belfont zone because it was just constant change, trying to figure out what we were going to do and scrambling a lot of times. So that, you know, that helped increase ridership. So it was a little quicker pace, but we also weren't in the middle of pandemic when we introduced it. So we had, you know, and this is stuff I'm doing, and we all are, you know, constantly doing, is getting out to businesses again and getting, you know, getting the word back out, which is, which has been a struggle, there's no doubt about it.
We've also found that the best way to train people is for us to go out, we do a lot of group presentations. It's just easier when you can sit with people and show them the app and show them how it works, so of course, we couldn't do that for a very long period during COVID.
And a great example of that is Greystone out in Belfont. We've been there since we first started the program 12 times, and every time I go out there, I'm always downloading an app for somebody and showing them how to use it, and, and they catch on very easily. Once they, once they've done it, that's the key, is just getting them to use it once. Once they use it, they like it, because there's a ton of information that's provided to them right there and then.
You doing any trips to center care?
The new, uh,
Some, not much, some, but they also have their own unit. Yeah, they also have their own vehicle out there, but we do too, some. And it's, right now it looks like probably more workers than anything.
More employees than, yeah.
Yeah, yep, yep.
They have a big workforce.
Yeah, yes, it is. It's a big, big area, big, um, building.
So I will also say, you know, when we're talking about that these are pilots, it's because the areas that we're introducing them are so different. You know, Belfont, we knew that we had sort of a, a small city, but it was so far out from the rest of the service, so that's what we were dealing with, with Belfont. That's why we started it there first, to give it a try. Here, it was a matter of, you guys are closer in to the service, but there weren't a lot of pedestrian amenities and those kind of things, so that's why we wanted to try Harris and see how it would work in Harris. It's new in the industry, and everybody is experimenting and trying to figure out how it works best.
Is the Belfont route continuing to include the Blanchard Street Spring Township in the Pleasant Gap?
Uh, it's, as far as the fixed route, or the,
Any route.
So, um, the, the Go Zone hits the Belfont Spring and Benner, and then parts of College when it gets in closer to the mall. There is a, an existing commuter-level route that still goes into Belfont, and the reason we still have that there, and we're hanging on to it because a lot of folks have not gone back to in-person work at Penn State. And what we found was, is it got, is it got more and more use, the trips to Penn State were bogging the service down and making the wait times too long. So that sort of took the weight off of the Go for the, for the other trips that were other than going to, to, so we have it. It goes downtown so that they can connect with that XB route, the regular fixed route, so.
I guess, I'm kind of interested in how Go has picked up what used to be on the P route. And I'm not quite, you know, like how has that progressed over the last couple of years? Are we, are we providing the same amount of service? Are we having less usage? I understand the pandemic.
Yeah, so Go is outperforming the P route now. Um, and the, and it's continuing. So the P route, we've seen, just in the last three months, we saw a little uptick, but it, it went from 11 and a half passengers for a whole day to 13 passengers for a whole day, where we're seeing much larger growth in the Go service. And again, the Go service, more people can access the Go service than can actually walk to get to the P.
Okay. One thing that I, I wonder about is, the, the P route's very obvious for people because we see the buses, we know, we see the signs for the bus stops.
Mm-hmm.
The Go route is, unless I'm in tune on your website or something, is more, is not as, may not be as obvious to people. And how are we reaching out? Are we doing a good job of letting people know that this alternative exists?
We're always open to doing more. We try to get into, some of the best things are more like the group kind of thing, so if there, we've had some presentations to different groups here in the area. I, I should just let Derek stand up here, because the questions are all about Go.
So, um, so as LaWanna talked about, we've actually done some presentations. Actually, one of the best things that we found in Belfont, and we're doing it here, is when the drivers have downtime, they will actually take a sheet of paper that has two compasses and start handing it out to people when they see them. And that gives the interaction between the driver and the patron anyways, and they're the ones that are upfronts doing this. And so that, you know, we're utilizing them as, as marketing, basically. So that's worked out well, and we continue to do that.
We've done direct mail marketing.
We've done direct mail.
Passing passes directly to people's houses here in Harris.
Yep. And then I've also gone out to, you know, bus stops that are, you know, that in the past have been heavily used, and talked to patrons, and talked to them about CattaGo, and also given them that same piece of paper that shows how to use everything, and give them a couple compasses to use the service and try it out. Because what we found, most people, once they use it, they continue to use it.
Maybe even put a sign on the bus stops saying, here's an alternative for you.
Yeah. No, 100%, and that's something, actually, I'm glad you said that, because we did that on Pleasant Gap, and we need to take care of that here.
They'll give you a few passes for that coming.
There you go, see.
And, and maybe we can do more too.
Yeah, we can definitely do more. And I had, I mentioned this to Richard when I met with him last week, and I just wanted to bring it up again. With the gas prices being the way they are right now, and I know there are people, especially that live out here, that are going to Penn State to go to work, I don't know if this is something you could consider, but maybe during rush hour from 7:00 to 9:00 and 4:00 to 6:00, you could run CattaGo all the way down to the gate, to the Allen Street gates. And then people that are commuting to campus could actually have a way to get there without having to make that transfer, and you might see more riders. Again, it's just that I thought I had.
The problem with that concept is that becomes more like a taxi service, and, and we aren't a taxi company. So that's why we use it to bring, we bring people from outer edges into the, where we've got the more frequent service, because the idea of running a 40-foot bus in some of these areas is just,
Sure.
We've been, it was tried for how many years? It wasn't working, so it was time to try some new ideas.
And I, I will say, we, in Belfont, we actually did that, kind of that concept for a while. We had taken them all the way into Curtain, near Porter. The problem we were finding was it was slowing down the service in the zone. And so the people in the zone were not getting served well, and we're running all the way out here. So it's, it's an offset of timing, and so that's something that we always have to pay, you know, very close attention to when we're, you know, when we're operating the system.
Does the capacity of the articulated buses reach what you anticipated?
So we're using, we're, we're using those twofold. We're using those in the student corridors where,
Yeah, I see them running to the R.
Yeah, even, even during the pandemic in the last year, we've been having trouble keeping up with the student, um, demand with the 40-foot buses. And then the other thing, we started using them early on in some of those areas to allow for more spacing between people. But yeah, we're, those are being utilized in the student corridors to help us with the fact that we can't just continue to put buses out there because we don't have enough operators to do that.
What's the articulated bus hold capacity?
Well, it's, um, it's considered, I think, 60 seats, but we, you know, we have, it's standing room. Our, our buses in the, in the student corridors, you, you don't get on and expect to sit.
It all depends on who's back.
Yeah, yeah, the drivers, some of the drivers are better at it than others too. So, so, yeah.
You would know about that because you're a bus driver.
Well, we're, we're currently have the 5% increase is in effect, so we're talking about continuing it. Where are we going?
I think that's next what we're talking about.
Yeah, the next question.
That's the next session.
The managers met with LaWanna back the beginning of March. I was ill, so I was not on the call that day, but I understand they discussed the flat 5% increase again. And then I think LaWanna discussed with them putting together a committee that could look at, because CattaGo isn't, does not take into account when they're doing the funding formula. And as Catta expands, obviously that needs to be taken more into account. So I think there was discussion of putting together this committee to try to figure out what to do with CattaGo and how to take that into consideration in the funding formula. I know there's also some concern amongst some of the Catta members that Catta membership doesn't get you much beyond a board seat, and so I know, and I expressed this to Richard when I saw him last week as well, that perhaps that membership needs to be looked at as well. Being a board member's certainly great, but I think that membership, I know Pat, Patton Township has had some issues as well.
Yeah, for example, you have a board member that looks out for, you know, brings, he's constantly coming to us, how many times have we talked in the last couple weeks, Richard? He's constantly talking to me about things, you know, that, you know, if you don't have a board member, you don't have someone doing that. The Sunday service is something that happens within the member municipalities that doesn't happen outside of the member municipalities. So there, there is a benefit to that. The, when we, when we talked with the municipal managers, they wanted to make sure that everybody was involved and at the, had a seat at the table for trying to discuss this. It's, the, the current formula is actually only based on fixed routes, so it doesn't look at Catteride services, it doesn't look at CattaGo services, and as, as we're changing and our mobility is changing, we need to find a new way to do that. We're always looking for, in the past, there's always been the conversation about how do we make it easier, and maybe if we all get together, we can move to something that's easier, can't promise. There's also, just from many, many years of using formulas, there's some mileage things that need to be fixed, but with CattaGo coming in and some of the other things, it, it just seems like a really good time to try and like fix all of these issues that we have with the formula. Part of the conversation is as well is that now we have people in COG that aren't in the Catta service, and we have people in Catta service that aren't in COG. So originally, the idea of being in COG was to try and save the elected officials extra meetings, but when Act 44 went in, the state requires us to go to each of you and get a resolution, so we're going through the COG process. And then we still end up having to come to each of you and do meetings, and so it's just, the process just isn't working very well anymore, so.
You know, you're using the Miller formula?
The Miller formula went away. I, I always laugh because you guys have been around long enough that you remember the Miller formula, so you always ask me about it. But a lot of the other communities have had such turnover with their elected officials that nobody even remembers what that was.
I have a question for you. You just said that the contribution is based on fixed routes. So if we lose the P route, we have no fixed route, so we don't have a contribution after that, is that what that means?
So that's, by the formula, but by state legislation, that doesn't work, and so that's why I have to figure out what to do about it.
I would be more than happy to pay for our CattaGo at the rate Belfont pays, at $6.70 a trip, and we're paying $75 a trip. So I would be more than happy to pay $6.70 for 464 trips as our contribution, because Belfont pays $6.70 for their 3,800 trips.
These are all the things, and so the other thing that's very confusing for people, and it came out very strongly when I talked to the municipal managers, is the local match is not based on service, it's not based on Catta's budget, it is completely based on the funding we get from the state. So under legislation, it's supposed to be 15%, the local municipalities, but we were, we've been underfunded for a very long time, we continue to be underfunded, we don't know when we're going to have that catch-up. So what the state says is that each year we go up 5% until we hit that 15%. So for instance, I guess sales tax did well this year, and we got a higher amount of state subsidy this coming year. They told us to expect a cut, and we ended up with a, a slight, you know, like with an increase. But for the municipalities here, it's still just the same 5% it'll go up, even though the state funding is much higher. But that's always a confusion, and that's one of the things that's been talked about is maybe we should get away from it being based on service at all, because it's confusing for people.
What, uh, what, that's 5% of state, what about federal funding? What do they require?
They don't require the local match. The state, so how it works is, the federal money, we need the state money to get the federal money, and to get the state money, we need the local match. So it's sort of a, a chain that helps us fund our services.
So the state is requiring 5% on their share?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's, well, they, what they're, what they were, what they require is for us to go up 5% a year until we get to 15% match on whatever they, they offer.
Where are we?
Nowhere near. And I don't know that we're going to get to 15%. As the money goes up, and we're only going up 5%, we just, we just keep getting farther from the 15%.
It's a catch-up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but, so then the federal looks at what the state gives us? Is that what, how that works?
Well, the, for anything federal, we have to get, it's typically 20% match from the state, and when the state puts in, they want a certain percentage out of the local.
Okay, that's, that's out of my pay range.
I, well, and I, I've got my, I've got my guy over there that does it.
I don't care. I don't want to hear it.
Because every time I, every once in a while, I say something wrong and they, they correct me because it's so convoluted.
I wouldn't know anyhow.
It's so convoluted, so.
Is Half Moon out of the system now?
Yeah, Half Moon left.
How many years ago?
We may be up at five years ago, Half Moon went, went out of the system. We just, the ridership was so low there, and there was just no way to, to, it's farmland and roads that, you know, if you get a detour, you're going, you know, you could be a half-hour detour to try and get back around, so.
I see signs on 45 going that way, share, uh, Catta, think about sharing a ride with someone. Is that operating through you?
That's Catta Commu, yeah, that's our van pool program, and that's another piece that isn't measured anywhere. So the people who use that service are outside center county, but they're getting to employers within center county, so there's that benefit as well.
Somerset County?
Uh, yeah, the, that's Derek too.
You see, you see a lot of those, even at Lock Haven.
Yeah, so that program, again, with the, so many people having, sending their people home during the pandemic, that program has, has been just really hit hard.
Yeah, we, we, before the pandemic, we had 34 van pools running. As of right now, we have 11 now. Three of those are Penn State, and eight of those are, are prison units. And they come out anywhere from Crescent, Lewestown, Altoona, Phillipsburg. So, and that's building back up again, where obviously with, as you spoke about the fact the gas prices are changing, so I'm getting a lot of calls again, and, you know, looking And, you know, looking at van pools again, so, and, you know, I think the, people are coming back to work, too. Yeah, people are coming back to work, yeah, so.
We're starting to see people coming back into the office.
It's, it's starting to adjust again, so. But yeah, it, it really, uh, it took a big hit during the pandemic. It, it, I think it took about four months from ago, from thirty-four down to eleven.
Those are the sheets in Lock Haven, I'm surprised to see one of the vans sitting.
Yep, yep.
In that parking lot.
Yep, they have sit in a, uh, in a, um, secure lighted area. Um, so that's part of the rules on it.
It's, it's sort of an interesting thing, too, about our bus operators is, um, particularly in our maintenance area, but also bus operators. We have people that are coming in from outside of Center County, um, for those jobs, so.
Okay, let's try to wrap this up. What do we need to do tonight?
Are you guys okay with the five percent flat fee increase? I think Luana would like to know that. Um, and then if you have any comments on the P, and we'll make sure. I've been putting out information about the public hearing so that folks know, um, about the P. And if there's anything you want me to share about CATA go, we'd certainly be happy to do that as well. It's nice to see the ridership increasing on that, so.
And I did want to say the concept behind the five percent is to give the committee a chance to really sort of dig in, try and figure out if there's some other way to do this, um, so that hopefully by the time you get to budget time in the fall, you'll know where things are going.
So that committee is, is operating and being formed?
Uh, w- right now, that's what I'm doing. Uh, when I'm talking about service in all the communities, I'm talking about the committee as well and getting, uh, getting, um, the buy-in hopefully from folks to form the committee.
Including members for the committee, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
So, um, let's, let's separate the two. Five percent we're talking about for the remainder of the year?
Talking about when the fiscal year starts.
July.
There's, it's July.
For their fiscal year.
July to June.
At sixteen fifty-eight.
Which we're already paying now.
Yeah, so it would be, um, an increase of one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars on the operating side. And then on the capital side, we had an agreement, um, for a flat amount for three years. We're in the, it would, this would be the last of those three years. So it's, uh, four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, the same as it was the last two years.
Thoughts?
About forty thousand total, then with the new, uh, sixteen fifty-eight and the four, and the four thousand.
Go ahead, Frank.
Well, I, thought-wise, I, you know, I just, I just think that you keep giving five percent and we keep going up and services keep going down. And I, I like CATA go and I'm not saying it's not picking that up. But I think until we can get this committee and get this hashed out, but I do believe that, that we do need to look at this funding's formula because, uh, I see, uh, I see the buses that go on the, up on the university. And I would be willing to wager without seeing the numbers that the majority of the, uh, operators and equipment go to that university. And I, from that, that sta- standpoint, I think they should be paying more than they're paying now. They should be paying the lion's share of this if they're going to require the, the equipment and everything. But that being said, I think the.
Equipment, what equipment?
The buses. But anyway, I would say that, that the five, I'm okay right now till we get this ironed out, but I do believe this committee does need to iron this out.
Do we have consensus on the five percent? All right.
Well, it's, it's, we don't have to, but it certainly makes it tougher if we don't. We had, many, many years, we did not give five percent, maybe twenty-five years. But it's, it, they're, it's in a situation right now until this all evens out with ridership and everything. I don't see, I don't see any reason not to do the five percent.
Okay, well, I think, and a functional bus system is important to this community.
And, and any comments I would have, what, you know what my normal comments are? Until we get ridership normalized, your buses, we, then we'll talk about in crowded Greece ridership.
Let's, so let's, let's briefly talk about, um, uh, membership on that committee. Are we looking for a staff person, for an elected official?
I think it's going to be staff.
It's.
Okay, because I, I know an elected official, I know something about buses, but, but, all right, you will handle that?
I, I will handle that and I will tap in Mr. Wilson as needed.
Okay, anybody else on this topic?
I can ask you one more. How were the decorated buses doing in terms of, of revenue generated for you?
That also went down during COVID and so we're hoping that we're going to start seeing that creeping back up because we weren't running very many buses to put advertising on, but yeah, we'll start to see that.
What's the cost of decorated bus?
I don't know that, I can get you that number, I don't know what it is right now.
Give me a question, just.
Haven't looked at that number recently, so.
And we talked about it when it started and I, and Dave Cole asked the question. I think we're at like the forty thousand range, thirty-five, forty thousand for the decorated bus?
The full wraps?
Yeah, the full.
I don't, I, I don't, I hate to tell you a number and be off, I'd rather give you the real number.
Senator.
Just the wrap the bus didn't cost that much?
Pardon?
It, it, they, they charged forty-five thousand dollars to wrap a bus. That was, the, the, the cost wrapping bus was much less than that, yeah.
All right, let's.
I remember talking about it, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are moving on to fire hydrants.
Want me to kick that off?
Please do.
Okay. So we have representatives from the State College Borough Water Authority here tonight to discuss the recent increase in fire hydrant rates. The authority recently notified staff that fees will be increasing from three hundred and thirty-six dollars per hydrant to four hundred and eight dollars per hydrant. Township has a hundred and sixty-seven hydrants, which brings our cost to sixty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars per year. Uh, we do charge an assessment to properties that are within seven hundred and eighty feet of a fire hydrant. That assessment annually brings in seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. We pay the remaining hydrant costs out of the general fund. In twenty-twenty-one, we paid a total of fifty-six thousand twenty-eight dollars for hydrants. Over the last five years, hydrant fees have increased from one hundred and ten dollars per hydrant in twenty-seventeen to four hundred and eight dollars per hydrant in twenty-twenty-two. At the end of twenty-nineteen, staff reached out to the water authority to find out what the actual operating and maintenance costs were for a hydrant and what the additional money was being used for. Brian Heiser, who's here tonight, the executive director, advised at that time that it costs one hundred dollars per hydrant for maintenance, which includes flushing, painting, and rebuilding or replacing hydrants as needed, and that the remaining two hundred and thirty-six dollars per hydrant was used to cover maintenance of the support system, which includes, quote, "every other aspect of the system that contributes to delivering water to the hydrants." Essentially, the authority was using, seemed to be using some of the hydrant fee to fund capital projects. At that time in twenty-nineteen, Mr. Heiser mentioned the Ischl Street main replacement project and valves that were rebuilt on Main Street. And I put a copy of his email in your, uh, packet. The authority is governed by the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, which, fun fact, I read last week. Um, and I could not find any citations in the act that related to how the hydrant fee could be calculated. It seems fixated on the tapping fees. Um, our, uh, Mike Smith, our municipal, our rep to the water authority, did some research on what other, other authorities in our area are charging for hydrants. And I put that information in your packet as well. We do not have a vote on the water authority, we have a liaison to the water authority. I will note that the second-class township code, um, and all my research found this out, too, that we can charge either a hundred percent of the hydrant out of a hydrant assessment, which means we would have to drastically raise that hydrant assessment, uh, when we do the budget in the fall. Or we can charge a hundred percent out of the general fund. We can't do half and half. So if we decide to move forward doing it in the general fund, we're going to need to find a way to replace seventy thousand dollars of revenue to take care of the hydrants. So Mr. Heiser is here? Would you like to speak, get off?
Sure. So, uh, first of all, Amy, thank you for hitting the, the summary. Uh, and out of respect for all of your time tonight, uh, we will gladly, Katie is with me as well. Uh, we will gladly try to answer as many questions as, as we can for you. Um, as, as Amy stated, uh, we view the fire hydrant, fire protection system as the entire system that it takes to get water to that piece of cast iron that is on top of the ground. If there is not a robust delivery system to that, as your fire chief will, uh, I'm certain agree with me, those pieces of cast iron on top of the ground are worthless. Uh, so as we have tried to do additional work, um, Amy mentioned capital projects. Capital projects are funded out of a portion of our water sales. So the fire hydrant assessments are used for ongoing system maintenance, valve repairs. Repairs for leaks, for example, to ensure that there is good water service to the fire hydrants. Ongoing maintenance of the fire hydrants, uh, ongoing assessments of the fire hydrants. Um, the Alphas, Bolzberg, both, when they use a fire hydrant, they contact us after they have been used. We go out and immediately inspect them because lots of times, not lots of times, there are occasions when a fire hydrant is used, it fails when it's closed. You don't know that until it's opened again. So we go operate the fire hydrant as soon as we are notified that they've been used to ensure that they're going to work the next time they are needed. So Amy talked a little bit about, uh, some numbers that I had given her, uh, several years ago uh, when, when she had asked some of the same questions. Um, at that time of the fire hydrant rate, we were, it was costing us one hundred dollars per fire hydrant, just as she stated. Uh, last year, that same work, which is flushing of the hydrants, the, uh, painting, the assessment, rebuilds, uh, cost us a hundred and forty-seven dollars per hydrant. So it is increasing. We are experiencing astronomical increases in prices, uh, as I know you are as well. So with that, I, as I said, I don't want to take a lot of your time. I don't want to, don't want to minimize your concerns. So we are going to turn it over to you. Whatever questions you have of us, we will certainly try to answer those.
All right, gentlemen? Do you want to kick it off?
See if Danny does, I can if he doesn't.
Why don't you give it a start?
Oh, gosh, I got a lot to do.
Okay, I'll give it a start.
Who'll fill in for you?
You can fill in for me, okay. All right, I looked at, at this and I read all this material that you sent us. And, uh, I, I just, I just, ah, I, I gotta, I'm, I'm gonna have to take a chill pill here. Um, the reason I, I, I'm bringing this up is if I look at, at your budget here, I assume is from twenty-twenty-two budget, and I'm looking through that and I leaf back through here and I see fire hydrant, maintenance of fire hydrants. It's on page six. It says total labor that you're budgeting for twenty-twenty-two is thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, labor and materials of seventy thousand. That's a hundred thousand dollars roughly, a hundred thousand five hundred dollars. And I assume your, uh, your, your, your whole system, as you said, is the State College Borough Water Authority. Why would Harris Township have to pay sixty-eight percent of it? That would be my first question. Because you have us at sixty-eight thousand for, for, for the hydrants and you're only, you're only costing you a hundred and five thousand. In fact, if I look, you haven't hit that in a couple of years, you're only at fifty-four thousand through twelve thirty-one twenty-one. So I, I, I mean, I, I don't understand that. I also added up all the, the fee increases and the number of hydrants we had since twenty-seventeen. And Harris Township, if through the end of twenty-twenty-two, will have paid an extra hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars worth of, of fees for hydrants. Uh, and then I looked on your budget and I see an increase in something called the re-board reserve fund of seven hundred and seven, or seven hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and eight dollars from twenty-one to twenty-two. I, that's, that's where I have a problem. I, I have a problem that we're sitting here, you're sitting on four million dollars in board reserve funds. You're sitting on tank painting funds with a million dollars. I mean, I, I, I know paint, painting tanks is expensive, but a million bucks for painting tanks? So you're sitting on five hundred, or five million dollars for reserve funds and yet you keep coming to us saying you're going broke and you need, you need another twelve thousand this year, which is up a ton from, it's almost up seven, uh, fifty thousand dollars from twenty-seventeen. So that's where I have a problem when I read through this. I, I don't have a problem that we, we kind of charge for, for tanks and, and repair these things, but when I read the numbers, I, I, which I'm pretty decent at numbers, and I do know a little bit about water, water, uh, uh, supplying water and analysis and that type of thing. So that's where I have a problem. When I, when I sit and read these numbers and you come to us and say that, you know, we got to keep raising that number, I, I, I just, I just don't see it. I don't see the reason that those numbers had to come up. You could, instead of taking seven hundred and seventeen thousand, take five hundred thousand increase and give us back our hundred and fifty-one thousand that we had for the last five years. I mean, that's what I'm looking at. I, I'm sorry, I, I just don't see the need to keep raising these rates. And unless there's something in here that's not true, I, I just don't understand that.
So. The, I'm, I'm trying to think which best to address your, your entire comment. Um, so the money that we are putting into board reserves, that's the money that I talked about that was for capital projects. That is a percentage of our metered sales. So that's not coming from the fire hydrant rates. That's the money that's used, for example, for the replacement of the main on Bolzberg Pike. Okay?
And I do see you had that in there, just to answer you. You had a, uh, water line replacement fund, you had that in there and you're, you're getting rid of, at the end of twenty-one, you have six hundred and forty-two thousand and you are, you have none for twenty-twenty-two. So I'm assuming that six hundred and forty-seven thousand is what you're using for line replacements. And that's in your reserve fund that you have on that same page.
That's correct. That line item was rolled into the entire board reserve because we use the board reserve for capital projects. Um, the, the line replacement fund that was in there was from, uh, previous administration. They separated it out, we rolled it all into the board reserve. That's why that line item is not there. The tank painting that you're talking about, um, we will start our tank painting cycle next year. We have thirteen steel storage tanks to paint. Next year, we are anticipating one and a half million to paint an elevated tank, which is about probably almost ten times what it cost to build it.
And just build a new one?
You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't touch one for a million and a half now on an elevated tank?
Oh, you just said, you just said it's one tenth of what it takes to rebuild one.
What it cost to build it originally. And we're talking in the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties when that tank was built. So the, the reserve funds, while, yes, you are correct, we do have a healthy reserve. When we start painting tanks, that reserve, as well as a planned, uh, facility that we will be, that we hope to be building at our West Branch Road main office for additional storage for equipment and materials, that will, those projects will be paid directly out of reserves. So the, the reserves will start to deplete as of next year. The, the money that we continue to put into board reserves for metered sales will be continued to, we, we try to take every dollar that we put into metered sales. We try to budget that same amount back out that same year. However, when we come in under budget, that money goes into reserves. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden, some of the other comments you, or questions you had.
I said I would, I want to go first.
Well, and that's fine, I want to try to address everything. Oh, one of the other items you had, one, one of the lines that you missed with respect directly in the budget to, to hydrant maintenance is the flushing line. Um, we budgeted fifty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty-two. In twenty-twenty-one, we're projecting that it cost us seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars for flushing.
And what's the cost on that? What, what, where do we, where does the cost come from that? I, I'm assuming you're taking the, the hydrant, taking the caps off and opening the top and flushing it for a certain period of time, then you close it, close it off and cap it back up and, and go to the next one, is that correct?
Labor, equipment, dechlorination tablets, when we have to dechlorinate.
At the high, what, when you're flushing?
When we're flushing, yes, that's correct.
I just question, I just, I don't see the, I don't see the need for an increase. I just don't see it. And then, and then I could also, we could also go down to, uh, what is it? In Contract Mifflin Town, have them come up and do them, because it seems like they can do them for eighty-five dollars an hour or something like that. So maybe we bring them up and contract them. Outsource the flushing? Yeah, but there's outsourced the flushing. Jeez.
So.
The, the number of the second.
Second or the last page, Brian?
The twenty-twenty-two board reserve budget, uh, has a total of three million six, including, um, the Penn West loan payment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The street reconstruction has to do with what's happening on Atherton Street, as with having the North Atherton Street last year.
That's correct, and it is not in that three point six because that's being paid out of reserves.
Okay, okay.
That's all that, the reconstruction is costing, a hundred and ninety thousand?
The twenty-twenty-two portion of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which the portion of twenty-twenty-two was, uh, primarily the engineering and materials that we purchased for the project. We did not purchase all materials, we just purchased valves because we have specific valves that we try to use in the system. So all the other materials, labor, will be billed to us after the project's completed. Uh, we're looking at in excess of one and a half million for that phase of Atherton Street.
And the Bolzberg Pike, Bolzberg Pike replacement, that's the section that's being undertaken now, the one hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, from Bo, or from.
Pump station.
Bowl Avenue up to Lee.
Okay.
Minus the bridge because that was put in, in twenty-nineteen. We went under the bridge in twenty-nineteen.
Oh, you got, they have that drilled already?
Yep, it's done.
Expensive call away project, too, is it? One point five?
Yes.
That's going to be a major project.
Now, go thoughts, please? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, if you want to continue that, um, line of thinking, I, I'm kind of going to diverge a little bit. a little bit. Well, my thoughts are, I mean, the fact that all of a sudden, you know, over the course of a fairly short time, you know, our hydrant fee has increased dramatically. And the flushing of the hydrants is flushing of the system, it benefits the entire system. And it has to be done to keep the water clean for all the customers. So I know for a fact that State College has pretty darn little water rates. So question I have is why are you hitting up us directly with a hydrant fee when a modest increase in water fee, you know, cost would, would handle this? And it would just make it so much easier for us to budget because we're, you know, all of a sudden we have to come out of, you know, our tax dollars, it's all coming out of the same pockets eventually anyway, but, um, it just put a modest increase on the, on the price of water. I mean, I know for a fact, I own property in Huntington and boy, our water's a lot more expensive over there. So I don't think you'd have a, you know, I, I don't think there'd be much issue with customers seeing a, such a slight increase in water fee. I mean, I, I, our water bills are quite low. So, so my, in other words, yeah, why haven't you considered that? Or why don't you do that?
You make a very good point. We have increased water rates considerably over the last several years. We have also increased the capacity fee, which is a, a flat rate component of our billing for all of our customers over the last several years. What we are trying to do is spread the entire revenue, the, the entire income across all of our means of generating income to do the maintenance operations of our facility. In 2022, the hydrant fees that we will be collecting by all of the municipalities that were from all of the municipalities that we serve is, only makes up 4.49% of our operating budget, of our, of our estimated income.
What's College Township water 403...
405.
40557.
Well, that being said, if it's such a small percentage, why couldn't it just be absorbed by rate increase so we don't have to deal with this kind of thing?
We are seeing an increase in customers that are having problems paying their water bills. We're trying to be considerate of that as well. So we did, go ahead.
Again, there's, there's ways to approach that too. If customers really can't afford to pay their water bills, there, there has to be methods to help them pay, just like you can get heating assistance. But again, just that, I don't think it's very creative just, uh, slapping an extra fee on the hydrant.
So you have a hardship fee basically.
Yeah, I mean...
For, for those that can't pay.
So there is a program very similar to Li Heat, like Mr. Wilson stated, that, uh, some of our customers take advantage of. There are also, uh, service organizations around here that also help with lots of different utility bills besides just water.
Then we have one in the Recycling Revenue Authority, basically a hardship fee.
Again, four point, if it's only four some percent.
So you make, you make a, you made another good point with respect to how the hydrants are being used. In addition to fire protection, they are used to ensure that there's good water quality across the entire system. So while you're, while you're assessing that hydrant fee or hydrant tax to the citizens within 780 feet of your hydrant, or of every hydrant, the benefit that those hydrants serve, serve a whole lot more than just the people that are within 780 feet of that hydrant. Uh, you know, and again, I, I think Mr. Winters back there would agree with me that not only are those hydrants serving the people in our public, that are on public water, but they also give them access when they have to tanker water because they are good hydrants. I looked at the hydrants in Harris Township. There is one hydrant in the entire township that is rated below 500 gallons a minute. You have one hydrant that is rated between 500 and 999 gallons per minute. All the other hydrants are rated for over 1,000 gallons a minute. The biggest majority of them are over 1,500 gallons per minute. That's as good as it gets for fire hydrants. So I think it's very important that, that you understand and that the citizens of Harris Township appreciate that there is extremely good fire service, fire protection in hydrants in the township. I mean, that, that to me says a lot, that, that plays into the PPC rating that ISO puts out, which gives your residents homeowner's insurance discounts. I'm not sure if it's any benefit to the, to the township directly, but it certainly plays a, a big role in how seriously we take the services that we provide for these fire hydrants.
Yeah, I've often mentioned, in a positive kind of way, and Van being here, uh, when we had the fire at the Lingle property, the closest hydrant was Aspen Heights. So they were flaying tankers in Aspen Heights and, and going down, they were also coming up from Mulholland. So the presence of the hydrant's important, even, even if you live a mile or two away. And, and if we had a major fire in London Hall, that's where the water would come from. So we need to remember that it's a mutual kind of beneficial thing.
Yes, absolutely is.
Well, number one, we can't argue you do a great, great system, great water system. You probably rate one of the highest in the state. I'm sure you are. I'm sure they rate water systems and you probably are pretty high, I would think, as far as rating goes. But what this is, what is interesting to us, this is taxpayers' dollars that we're talking about. We're not talking about, this comes out of our little pocket, we'll pay for this. And what Nigel hit it right on the head, and I'm gonna be very critical here, you're, you're, you're doing a good, you're doing a good job of trying to explain to us why you think the hydrant's phrase should be high, but you, I both know it doesn't cost that much to operate a hydrant. What, what I bothers me is that you run a, you have a service and you offer service, and if you're gonna do that, then you should charge what you need to charge for that, and that is in rates, and not try and hide it. And you even mentioned that in your report, that you, you found ways to raise more money, and this was one of them. And to me, that's kind of disingenuous. I think you need to be, uh, if, if, if you have a problem raising money through selling the water, then you're not charging enough for it, or you're spending too much money, one or the other. So I, I urge you to go back and say, look, let's, let's be honest with our customers. We, our water rates are flat, I understand they're flat because everybody's using water. We're growing 4% or 5%, which is, your growth is some too, but every time someone puts on a low, low flow showerhead, they're robbing you of some money, there's no doubt about it. And I can understand, I can appreciate that. But I wish you would have your board stand up to the fact that yes, we need to raise more income and do it, do it in a way that we understand, and that is high water rates. We know if we have to pay for water, we'll do that. We don't want, I don't want you to hide it in the hydrant rates and what you're doing. Being very, it very, you have, you've got probably the best, uh, money manager in the state working in the country with you, Mr. Hampton, and I, I guarantee you, there's a way that, that he would, would work this out. I don't look at budgets because budget, guys make budgets know how to manipulate budgets. I'm just, I, my criticism is, if you don't have enough income from your water, then, then increase it, like Nigel said. I don't know, it's big or small, let's, let's be honest about it. Let's be honest. Let, let's say, okay, we need this much revenue, this much we're gonna charge to deliver water to your house. Not hide it in, in someplace else like a fire hydrant, which the taxpayer has to pay anyhow. That, that comes out, we have to raise our taxes to do it. And I, I think you need to be more, more, more open and more honest about this than saying, okay, well, we can raise funds by, by, by increasing our hydrant fee, which isn't necessary. So those are just my comments. And I don't know that it's gonna go anywhere because we don't get a vote.
So I'll, I'll correct, first of all, with all due respect, uh, I believe we are being open. We have explanations in our budget as to what the, what the rates are for. I'm, have no problem standing here in front of you, telling you that the, the actual maintenance of that piece of cast iron that's sticking above the sidewalk is $147 per piece of steel sticking up.
I don't know how you figured that out. I have no idea. I have no idea.
We took all of our costs associated in 2021, divided them by the number of fire hydrants.
You could be, yeah.
In our system.
So that's, uh, how much, 100, that's several hundred dollars of what you're charging then?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You're charging several hundred dollars over what it actually cost to maintain those hydrants?
For the service of continuing to get the water to the hydrant.
It costs you 100 and, how much the service?
147.
And you're charging us 300 and...
400.
So it's, you, so you're overcharging.
No, from the ground up.
I don't care what, you said ground up or ground up, you're overcharging. If you need more money, go to the PUC and say, hey, we need more money, let's increase our rates.
Actually, they're not regulated by the PUC.
Whoever regulate, who regulates your rates? Anybody?
Nobody.
So you can charge whoever you want to charge?
The PUC.
Well, why don't you go back and say, look, people, we, we're, we're, we, we need this money and that's what we need it for, we're gonna raise our rates, not hide it in something else. That, that's, that's my complaint, that's what bothers me about this whole thing. Let's, let's get it out there and then we can have hearings where we want to have. Maybe, maybe you're spending too much. I don't know the answer to that. I'm loving your budget. I, I have no, 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 uh, control over your budget at all, what you spend, what you don't spend, but I'm, that's my comment, that's my, my criticism is if you have a money shortage, then let's, let's go to the customer and say, look, we have a money shortage, let's straighten it out. Simple. It may be months, it may be a lot, maybe, maybe we have to take a hit. I don't know that, but at least we'll know. At least we'll know. And I, and that's my criticism and, and I don't know, uh, how that's gonna go with the board, your board or not. I'm sure they've already made their decision, right, how they're gonna do this. I don't think there's, I don't think they're gonna say, come back tomorrow morning, win your next meeting and say, yeah, we're, we'll bring that back to what it really should be and then we'll, we'll try and adjust our rates. I don't think they're gonna do that. Am I pretty, pretty, pretty clear on that? Pretty true on that?
Uh, our finance committee is, is well aware of the budget that we proposed to them. They reviewed it, uh, and, and approved it, yes.
Budget's probably good. I don't have a great problem with the budget. I have a problem with the way you're trying to get the money. Let's, let's be honest. If, if in fact you don't have enough money, rate money coming in, then maybe only adjust it. If you don't, don't try and find it from other, some other source. That's, that's my only comment. And, and I, I, I'm sure you had some good advice, legal advice, that, that this is legal to do, but like I said, like we, we, we've got information, we've got conflicting information here. Uh, we've got at least three other municipalities that don't charge any, or do or don't charge, or charge much less, and they're more honest with their people. I, I, that is, I guess, I guess that's where I'm concerned about it. And I, and I'm not complaining about the service, not complaining about the water. I'd sooner drink your water than, than buy a bottle of water, than buy a bottle of water from Wise Market, which I don't know what's in it. I'd sooner, much sooner drink your water, and I'd do it for everything, so.
Why between 2018 and 19, we had a 100% increase, 125 to 252. Then from 19, 2019 to 2020, you went to 336, held that steady for two years, and now at 408. What, where do you, where do you come up with a 400% increase in five years? Am I reading that right, Brian? 2017 was 110. 2018 was 125. 2019 was 252, there's a 100% increase.
So part of, part of that, I'd like to address what he said.
What you read in here is they're using that, they're, they're finding ways to increase their revenue, and this is a way to do it.
Well, I understand that, but I'm sure...
That's not, that's nothing to do with...
What, what did you let?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So part of what you're seeing is we went decades without much of a fire hydrant rate or even any increase. So when, as we started to put income plans together, and then plus I also did my own research on other municipalities, municipal authorities, as well as PUC-regulated, uh, water providers with respect to fire hydrant rates. One of the things that I found to be most interesting is when I was sharing the information as to why I was asking them, was it raised a lot of questions. And a lot of the questions that they raised were from us, or to us saying, why are you raising your rates and the, the methodology behind it? And what I was finding out was a lot of these other municipalities haven't raised their fire hydrant rates in decades, 20, 30 years. And they are scratching their heads, wondering why they're not able to continue to have good service with their fire hydrants. We don't want to get there.
This has nothing to do with service of fire hydrants. Service of fire...
It absolutely does.
No, it does not. This is re-increasing your bottom line. Why don't you do it like, like Nigel suggested, instead of trying to defend the price of a fire hydrant? We're, we're not that dumb. I know, wasn't born yesterday, I know that it doesn't cost $400 to maintain a fire hydrant. You're using that extra money, it's revenue, you need revenue. And that's what you, you said right in here, you need revenue. So why don't you go back and say, look, here's our bottom line, we have this many customers, we have, we need to get this money, let, let's be honest and say, this is what it's gonna cost to deliver a gallon, 1,000 gallons to your house. Instead of saying, well, well, we'll raise some money, we'll go over and look what our fire, we'll, we'll, we'll charge twice as much for a hydrant repair as we need to. And I don't have any complaints with the hydrant service. Excellent. Every time we go to hydrant, it's there, it's maintained, it is excellent. I don't have any problems at all with it. But, but as I hear again, my problem is, you usually have to raise funds when you should be doing, I think, a different way. That's simple as that.
And, and that's fine, and I respect your, your opinion, absolutely.
How many people, how many users do we have that are composing at 17,700, I bet, is that, how many?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I, I do know that we have not updated our hydrant list in quite a while. Uh, we need to do that. And one of the discussion points, we need to have a budget time because as, you know, as I was doing all this research and found out, it's either gotta come 100% of the hydrant fee, which means we have to raise the rates massively, or it has to come 100% out of the general fund. It can't be one or the other.
And it goes right to...
The other, because, because of the way the law's written in the Pennsylvania...
We would not be including the Rocky Ridge people?
No, all the new...
Are they included in that?
All the new hydrants will be included when we update the hydrant assessment.
The Gates and the Rocky Ridge people and K-Word North and K-Word Two North or something other?
One thing I wanted to point out, I, I did quite a bit of research on these fees. Um, the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission does regulate private water systems. Private water systems are allowed to charge, under Title 66 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated statutes, they're allowed to charge 100% of the operating and maintenance costs of a hydrant, plus up to 25% of the water service associated with the hydrant. I don't know what your, what your percentage is, I know you're charging the 100%, I don't know what the rest of that difference, if that makes up more than 25%, but that's perhaps a better model than what we have going on elsewhere. Just a thought.
Your, your private is at 384.
That's for, that's a private...
Well, yeah.
He's not a private water system though.
Private, well.
He doesn't have, he doesn't have to follow the PUC for a private water system.
Okay. Well, here again, my, my complaint isn't with the water authority, they did a great job. And my complaint is how you are allocating your money, gaining your money, getting your money, I guess.
Let me take a turn.
I, I do want to address one more comment that Mr. Graham and, and Ms. Farkas had as well. You do have representation on our board. We have township representatives on our board. So, uh, in my opinion, it's not fair to yourselves to say you don't have representation.
We don't have a vote. We have representation, but he's not voting on your budget.
I'm not talking about Mr. Smith, I'm talking about our township appointed, or, or, or appointed board members that are from the townships. So one of ours is a Harris Town, he happens to be a Harris Township resident right now.
Jason Gertini.
Well, he is, he was appointed when he was in the borough.
He's appointed by Borough Council.
And now he's leaving.
Yeah.
So are you gonna appoint someone from the township in that position?
And it's Borough Council that does the appointment, it's not Harris Township. Harris Township appoints our liaison. Our liaison is actually the one who brought this to my attention. He came in with the budget and with the concerns. I never hear from our township representative because he's appointed by Borough Council, he's not appointed by the board of supervisors. So we don't have a direct vote on your board. We have a township resident who's appointed by Borough Council. Our representative doesn't have a vote.
My point was though, that, you know, you can absolutely go talk to, in this case, Mr. Gertini, where the... Mr. Gertini, where the Borough Council will appoint the next township representative from. I, I don't know. It depends on where they apply from.
Ferguson Township is, is a major customer of yours. They get no representative. And we were politely told that there will be nobody on that board that does not live in the borough. Jason lived in the borough at the time, and he moved out. Now, he's leaving, he's leaving town. So you're appointed vacancy. I'm curious to see where that vacancy is filled from.
The board is a seven-panel board. Four members are from the borough. Three members must be township residents.
Three, that, well, that, you just changed that. Is that right? Is that true?
It's been that way as long as I can remember.
Well, okay, let me put it this way. When the Water Authority took over Harris Township in 1906, or whatever it was, that was the rule. Now, it, obviously, it has changed. So you can appoint members on the board that are not, that not live in the boroughs they call it.
That's correct. Borough Council, Borough Council appoints them that we do not.
Okay.
Just, how's your day going?
[laughing].
You know, we, we don't have a lot of options here, but we could sure make you squirm. Um, so we have kind of, you've got three kinds of customers. You've got people that with metered water businesses, homeowners, and such. Uh, I see, we've got fire suppression systems, we've got fire hydrants. In terms of the fire hydrants, uh, we have several kinds of costs. Obviously, maintaining the fire hydrant is a fire hydrant cost. That just makes total sense. And then we're talking about, um, you know, um, kind of water usage. And that, I don't, probably is not that big for fire hydrants. Most of them are just sitting there waiting for, you know, some emergency when we need them. And then we have maintaining the capacity of the system. And so I, what I hear from my colleagues here is, how are we fairly dividing up maintaining that system capacity? And surely, it's not paraded just based upon water usage, because we need those fire hydrants for their potential emergency usage. But I think that in order to get this message across, or come to some kind of agree, we need a better understanding of how that capacity maintenance is being divvied up between those three types of uses, and why our fire hydrant system is paying, proportionate paying, relative to, and I see the fire suppression systems kind of falling into the same type of paradox, or there is, or there is capacity for emergencies, versus daily usage by businesses and personal usage. So that's what I would like to see, a better explanation of how that portion of the cost, and why the fire hydrant system is paying, the proportion it's paying, relative to individual homeowners and businesses. Okay? So that, that's where, I think that's kind of the source of what you're hearing around the table here, is like, it's like, is the fire hydrant system paying its fair share, or are businesses paying its fair share? And so the, I, you know, I suspect there's not a formula here. I suspect it's more like, well, what can we do? So that's kind of where the understanding, that's where I don't understand. And I think communicating that better, and whether that means that we all suddenly say, hey, this totally makes sense. Or we give some pushback and say, well, look, you know, maybe the balance isn't where it ought to be. But that's kind of the crux of our conversation, is where is that balance of that maintaining the system capacity?
That's a little more civil.
Between what we're doing for that potential fire protection hydrants and, and fire suppression systems versus individuals and people that are using the water on a daily basis. Does that, does that make any sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm jotting a few notes.
Okay. I always like to see the jotting. So that's, uh, yeah, that's my thoughts. Um, this is a discussion item.
I think that was a pretty good summary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I had to let you get it out first. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything on this topic?
I think, I think we voiced our concerns, and I suspect the authority recognizes.
All right.
No, I guess this may not be directed to you, but since there is a vacancy on that board, the stake, the Borough Council, I guess, decides that? Do we present someone to the Borough Council to put on that board?
We've never done that in the past.
I know.
Let's do it.
I'll reach out to Tom Fontaine and find out.
Well, let's, let's, let's make the presentation and see what they say.
Yeah, yeah.
What kind of change would it make in the bylaws to actually have a voting member from Harris Township?
Remember, we've asked that question like six times.
He says, he says they've already done that, right? You already have.
Voting, the voting member.
Yes. I think we, I think we ought to just propose somebody, and, and see what, see what they say.
Mr. Smith is simply a representative of Township.
Okay, you're in. You're in.
No, he, so, I'll, we've asked the question a couple of times, because Harris Township, when we sold the water system back in the 90s, my understanding was we were given a liaison to the board. That's Mr. Smith now. Bud was it. It was Gert Aaron for many years. Um, so Borough Council is appointing folks from the townships, and the last time they appointed Jason Gertini, I don't remember any conversation with Tom Fontaine or the borough.
He lived at the borough at the time. Yes.
He did. I, I don't remember any conversation, though. I will reach out to Tom and ask him what their thinking is, and how we might have a say in that. That's your best shot, because we've asked a bunch of times, and every time we've asked, we asked, when Max was here, we asked when John Lickman was here, and we were told the same thing every time. Nope, this is the way it is. You get a liaison. The, the representatives that, the board representatives come through Borough Council. Because the way the authority's organized, it's in their bylaws. It's the way they were organized. And it's, I mean, I understand that. We had an authority as well at one point, so. But I will talk with Tom Fontaine and see if there's anything we can do.
Tell, tell, tell Tom that we presented it to Brian, and he was most receptive of that change.
Right, Brian?
Tom, I mean, Tom and the other managers are aware of our concerns about the fire hydrant fees as well, so.
All right. We good, everybody?
Yeah.
Should we move on?
We beat it up a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jeff.
You got five minutes, so I'm more than bad.
On the real day, I'm sorry.
Are we going to move Memorial Day to the end of the agenda?
I thought we would cancel it this year.
You go there.
You just took a load off his shoulders.
See you, guys.
Yeah. We'll move it to Greenshaw.
Yeah.
Oh, too soon.
Hey, to bring you up to date, uh, I talked to John Wainwright last night. We're up to 105 vendors.
148?
He said the most we can take is 160.
But you've had normally.
So, and we, at one point, we were 70.
Se, yes.
So we, we went on vendors. Uh, the entertainment's been taken care of by Chris Kepler, uh, the State College Jazz Band, the acapella group from St. Joe, Little German Band, uh, the Ducks, Pure Cane Sugar, and the Nittany and Ice will be singing at the six o'clock service we arranged that.
Oh.
Uh, the race is moving in the right direction.
That way.
Whatever way. But I mean, the races, we've got, uh, it's online. If you want, Bud, if you want to register, you can go online to Race.
I'll register. I'll be about it.
You can be in my golf cart with me. So as we stand right now, due to Amy and you guys, and the committee, we're in good, good shape. We feel good. Everything's in, but what has happened, to let you know, I just love sitting here watching people ask you for rate increases, and I'm about ready to ask you for money. I mean, just to give you an idea, this is, this is being live, so I can't say what. The porta potties went from $75 to $92.50 a porta potty, and 20 bucks to clean them. The entertainment cost has gone up about 20, 25% for the entertainment. So, but the alarming thing, and Amy and I have talked about this, is we have to have a standby ambulance. Is that, is that the right word?
Yep. 135.
And, and the cost has gone from 1,500 to three grand for, for, uh, that day. It's parked at the, uh, fire hall. We bring it at eight o'clock, because we have to have it for.
This is for one day, they're going to charge you $3,000?
It's, it's 300, 300 bucks an hour.
10 hours.
Uh, you saw, you saw the email.
I put it in the chat.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't realize that was for one day. I was thinking, okay.
That's for one day.
For one day.
So, and again, it's here from, from eight o'clock in the morning till the end of the six o'clock service. So if, I don't care about fire hydrants, and I think, Bud, you may have been on the original board way back when, when, when they, 1906, you were on the original.
I was serving this, it was called Springfield.
But if the township would help share in the cost for the, for the ambulance, it would be great help. We're okay. I'm also getting, I've, I've got great sponsorship from Joel Confort Toyota. I got sponsorship from Seven Mountain Wine Cellars. The fire company's chipping in. I've talked to them. And so I'm trying to get as much sponsorship as I can. Uh, so I think we're all right, but if the township could kick in, it would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, is the ambulance stationed at the firewall during the carnival days?
No. It's only there on Monday.
No, if, we do, we do request them, if they're available, to come down to the carnival just to stand by. And they're available for other calls, though. They're not held there for any, any.
But they are, they're, they're physically present.
If they're available, they're physically present, yes.
Without paying?
Correct. Because they're still on call. They're not dedicated to that. They can be for other calls.
You're, you're talking different with respect to dedication of the.
They're, they're there for 10 hours. They never leave.
They will not leave for any other calls.
That's correct. That's correct.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve $1,500 donation to Bolzberg Village Conservatory for part of the ambulance cost.
I'll second that.
Now you can discuss it, bud.
All those in favor, please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, guys, thank you. I think, well, I, what I, what I think's going to happen is the people I've talked to, if we have good weather that day, we're going to have a lot of people here.
Yeah.
And by the way, the mansion's doing their thing. Uh, they're going to have vendors. Uh, we'll have golf carts going back and forth. I have all the golf cart sponsors, so we don't have to pay for those running the handicap people from the, from the mansion to here, where we need help with the fire cup.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
With the ambulance company people, when they get an ambulance call, and they, they transfer someone, they, they get money from them, too. They deduct that from our, from our $3,000.
I'll take that on advisement.
Yeah. So this is your last hurrah?
It's my last hurrah, guys. Like, I'm.
Have you found a replacement?
You.
Who? I can't have any other duty.
Thanks. You'd be perfect.
I don't, I can't have any other.
I, I just, Colleen and I want to do some things that, not next year Memorial Day, we want to travel.
Oh, we, we appreciate.
I've had fun. You know that.
All that you've done.
I've had a lot of fun.
I've, I've seen your notebook that you've assembled, and I think the next person stepping up to the task will, will benefit greatly from.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Things you've put together.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Is any car show going to be over at the museum?
No, I don't think so.
I, I, well, Tyler was going to call the Boy Scouts. I talked to Tyler last week, because the Boy Scouts called me, because Frank told the Boy Scouts to call me about parking.
He did call them. My father just told me today.
Yeah.
He did call them to ask them, which is kind of amazing, because apparently, from what I understood, the, the museum gave them nothing but grief before.
Well, and apparently, what Tyler at the museum told me when I emailed him, I was like, could you please call this guy from the Boy Scouts? And he said, oh, I handed it off to my manager, because he splits his time between here and a site in Erie County that he's maintaining. So he said, oh, I handed it off to the manager, and the manager hadn't taken care of it, but now I guess it's taken care of, so.
All right.
Someone was getting a deal of choice, that's no bad.
And if you guys still don't know, any vendor may want to come, that you talk to, just pass them on to us. And I appreciate the donation. Uh, Bud, you got, your big flag will be okay?
The what?
The big flag.
Oh, we're got it covered.
Okay. I, I can go home and go to bed now. Thanks, guys.
I, I guess we'll settle on times, but generally, okay.
Yeah, we'll work that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. And, um, interesting segue into our next item.
Yes, we're going to talk about the transient retail merchant license regulations. Todd is on the Zoom. Hopefully, he just woke up from a long winter's nap after those first few agenda items. Um, so we've been, we've been discuss, I did get an eye roll. We've been discussing, uh, the transient retail merchant ordinance, uh, after hearing some concerns from local vendors about the process. Uh, Todd, and Todd, to a great extent, did the most amount of research. I did a little bit of research on how our neighboring municipalities and other municipalities across the state are handling the process. And we came up with some suggestions that we think will still allow us to keep the transient retail merchant license, which is something that protects the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, and is part of our police powers, but makes it a little more modern and a little more friendly for the people that are utilizing it. So our first suggestion is that we revamp our application to no longer require that it be notarized and that it be picked up in person. I think that this is the largest crux of the problem, because right now, we have notarial language on there. So if you apply for the permit, you can download it, print it out, get it notarized, but you have to submit it in person. Todd takes care of, or you can mail it in. Todd takes care of reviewing it. And then you have to come pick it up, and you have to appear before Deb. Deb, you know, notarizes it, you appear saying everything's correct. We make a copy of your license. State College Borough, um, College Township, the municipalities I found down, Dairy Township, Pax, uh, Lower Paxton Township, they all allow you to just mail in the application with a copy of your driver's license. You acknowledge by signing on the application that we may do a background check if we feel we want to, or we need to. And then it gets processed, and then it gets sent back to the person. So.
Send it electronically?
You can send it in electronically.
Your driver's license on the floor?
Yes. And so when Todd and I were talking about it, there still is the issue of the fee, but like what we do with the tax certification, because we don't take Venmo or PayPal, because we get charged fees if we did that. But like with a tax certification, if someone needs a tax certification from us, they send us a fax or an email, and they attach a copy of a check made out to Harris Township for the fee for a tax certification. We would just do the same thing here. You can send in electronically your whole packet with the copy of the check, and then just drop the check in the mail to us, so that we get your, whatever the fee is, whatever the permit you're applying for. So we think that may take care of some of the issue with, I, I think if someone's coming in town to do a show, they're going to set up a university wine company, for example, and they're coming from Pittsburgh, it's really difficult for them to maybe get here, get the thing notarized, pick it up in person, and when they're maybe not going to be doing the show till Saturday.
What kind of advance, one, two, three-day advance kind of thing, or what do you?
Todd, I'm going to ask you to speak to that, how much lead time you need to process an application.
And considering weekends, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think a lot depends, well, there's an awful lot of feedback there.
Oh, we're not getting any here.
Keep talking.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think the timeframe depends an awful lot on how many applications I get at one time. If it's, if it's a Memorial Day event, we're going to get over 100. It's obviously going to take me a lot longer to issue licenses than it would be if, uh, it was just a random, uh, event, where it's going to have five to 10 vendors. Typically, I don't start looking at the applications until we've received the payment for the application. We've had too many instances. Mostly, mostly it's been with, uh, door-to-door salesmen, but it's been sometimes with, uh, event vendors, where we go through all the work, we issue permit, and they never show up for it. Whether that means they're not going door-to-door, or they're not at the event, we don't know. It's just that they've never gotten a license, they never paid for it, and we've done the work. So, uh, we typically don't start working on the application until we receive payment.
Are we differentiated between peddlers and vendors?
No, it's the same under.
Can I ask some questions?
Can you go to the microphone, Tracy?
Yes, I can do the microphone.
Thank you.
One time Bud brought up the difference between those.
Yeah, I guess my problem is this. Like, I mean, I can certainly understand something that's offering a background check for a peddler's license. I don't want somebody coming to my house without having the township knowledge of that person coming to my house. Fair enough. I think that we should be paid a fee for that privilege to go door-to-door. However, you know, we're talking about people coming for Memorial Day. These people are not going door-to-door. Frankly, I don't think we have any business to look into their background.
We don't, Tracy, what we're saying is that we have the ability if we want to.
I understand that. But we're also charging a fee.
Which is $25.
It doesn't matter what it is. It is, are all townships doing this?
Yes.
Does the Borough, the Borough does this as well?
Borough's three hundred dollars for their fee.
I just think it's completely something that's not, I don't feel it's necessary at all.
I understand that, and I think Todd will chime in, too. But the reason we do this, right, and the reason we do this for people going door-to-door, it's so that our residents, if a resident comes, and we are proposing some changes to the length of time we do offer these applications for. So if you're just coming for Memorial Day, we're proposing a one-day fee, a one-day license, which would be like ten dollars. So you could come in and do Memorial Day. You wouldn't have to be here, have one for six months. But our concern is, so somebody comes in and is going to sell Grandma's Doilies, that was the example Bud was using the other day in my office. They're going to sell Grandma's Doilies at Memorial Day. I buy from Grandma's Doilies. All of a sudden, my credit card gets stolen, and that's the only purchase I made that day. And then I find out the five other people's credit cards got stolen from Grandma's Doilies. So we can then call, they can call the township and go, do you have any information on this? We can hand over the application information to State College Police, who can then call the person and go, hey, we have all this information that you were selling in Harris Township. We have a license from you. It's just to protect our residents. It's one of our police powers.
But isn't that also, all that information, is that not also given to the person for the event? And is it also not?
We can't.
Their insurance, wait, wait, wait. Their insurance certificates given by these vendors? Well, there are in the wine walk.
So we.
We get all the insurance certificates given by our vendors.
What the township gets for a special event, we get the certificate of liability insurance from the person holding the event. So for the wine walk, it was usually either the conservancy or whoever the.
But we have to collect it from our vendors.
Right, but we can't go back to you. That's, that's not our police powers. You don't have our police powers. We have our police powers. And this falls under our police powers. This protects our residents. This is not some layer of bureaucracy.
Whether or not our residents is, whether they're from Pittsburgh, they come into town.
No, if, we're protecting anybody that goes to Memorial Day, and there's some fly-by-night vendor, or anybody that goes to.
Protect those people coming.
But it's the bank that's protect, you're not protecting, the bank is protecting me and my credit card.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
You're not, you're not protecting my credit card. My bank is protecting it.
Police department needs to do an investigation. We literally have all the information from all the vendors on hand.
But the police department is not going to do an investigation into my credit card.
They do if there's identity theft. Absolutely.
Well, they're not, they're not, it's not an identity theft. They're just taking my credit card.
I see what I did now.
It happens all the, I've gotten rid of.
We had another guy that was selling meat, literally selling meat, door-to-door.
That's a peddler.
Well, it's a peddler.
But he, but he came into the township, and we had to chase him down with the police because he was driving around with a meat wagon, just randomly stopping, being like, yo, want some meat?
Yeah, but that's, that's what I want a license for, somebody going door-to-door, coming to my house.
Well, he wasn't necessarily coming to people's houses. And to me, it's the same.
Tracy, that's the way we've always done it.
Well, we haven't done it until now.
I know.
We've actually done it since the nineteen nineties.
We're making a problem that isn't there.
But, okay, just let, just let me ask one more question. Is this done in all townships? Or just the borough and us?
No, it's everyone in the center region.
So who's in township and Montgomery?
Dairy Township, Lower Paxton Township, most of the townships.
Brooklyn Township and.
Yep, most of the townships in Pennsylvania. It falls under our police powers, and most of them run it through their police departments, those that have it.
Okay, and so we're reducing the cost of it.
We're talking.
And also, who's responsible, I may as well ask this now, who is responsible then for getting this information out? It goes out in the briefing of people who are interested in the.
So what, if I can kind of go on with the rest of the suggestions, we're jumping ahead a little bit, if the board's okay with that. So our first suggestion was to change the way we process the application. So we'll take the notarial language, what was different, was what was different from our application to the ones that I looked at in College Township, State College, Lower Paxton, and Dairy Township. So our next suggestion is to actually offer varying lengths of license terms. Right now, you can get a six-month license, it's twenty-five dollars. We're suggesting that we allow a one-day license, which would be for somebody coming in for Memorial Day or a wine walk or whatever, and charge them ten dollars. For a month, it would be fifteen dollars. For six months, it would be twenty-five dollars. An annual license would be fifty dollars, and then allowing the renewal of the annual license would be twenty dollars. So, and then we talked about making sure that when we have the special events, because we have a special events registration form, putting on the special events registration form so that those organizers know that they have to follow, their vendors have to follow these regulations, and making sure that they get a stack of the applications or they get a link to go get the application, so they're sending it out to their vendors as well. So they're aware of that. And then, Todd, do you want to talk a little bit about what we were talking about with the nonprofit organizations? Because you had a good idea on that.
Yeah, that's, that's number three in your agenda. What's in your agenda is the language that says that you exempt merchants participating in events sponsored by nonprofit organizations from paying license fee. That's inconsistent with the way everybody else does it, and that's really inconsistent with the way we handle door-to-door salesmen also. In, in the cases that have been described to me, and the ones I've seen and researched, the, typically, the organizer of the event, the person that, or the organization that is the nonprofit, is not applying for the license. It's the, it's the individual vendors who are applying for the license. If it was a situation where fifteen vendors were showing up on the nonprofit's property to conduct an event, my understanding is typically the vendor pays the nonprofit or the property owner a donation, a fee that's called a donation, and that's the, that's the chair to report the portion of the, of the transaction. The vendors are all there typically for profit. They're there to make money. All the vendors I've talked to related to this have told me that they don't show up at events unless they're making money. And, and so to not charge the vendors a fee unless they're giving their proceeds to the nonprofit as, as part of the charity we're giving, isn't consistent at all with the way we do it currently or the way anybody does it in any of the research I saw. So clearly, if someone's going door-to-door, like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, we've never charged them the fee. We've asked that the scout leader or somebody provide us with the names of the scouts or the people, if it's not a scouting organization, the people that are conducting the sales or going door-to-door. So we have a record of it in case there is a problem. But anybody that's doing this stuff for profit, we think they should be covered by the regulations, and we think they should pay the fees.
But Todd, didn't we talk to you about if it's like Memorial Day or somebody that they, the event organizers could collect all that? Didn't we talk about they could actually turn in all the applications, and then we would still process them? I remember we had a conversation last week, but I am blanking.
Well, the conversation last week, Amy and I had a conversation before the agenda was prepared, and we had a conversation after the agenda was prepared. The conversations we've had leading up to last week were that there was some support on the part of some people in having the organizers of the events do all this work and turn it in at one time in the township. And really, there's no, there's no way under the law to make that happen. As was discussed earlier, we have the police power. The state gives us the police power. It doesn't give the event organizers and property owners any police power whatsoever. So if they don't collect the right information, if they don't collect any information and they return any information and the event occurs, then there's nothing we can do about it, because it's our responsibility to do that. If, if an event, if an event organizer wants to set a deadline by which all those applications have to be turned in, from all vendors, we turn them all in at the same time, I don't know that we necessarily have a problem with that, because I guess if, if these amendments are adopted, we don't care how we get the applications. It would be a problem if we got a hundred applications a week before Memorial Day, because that's eight or nine hours of work on my part to do that. And it's going to take me longer than, you know, I can't dedicate an entire day or two just to doing these things. So I guess we don't care who turns in all the applications. I guess the issue with this number three in the agenda is even if the event organizers turning in the applications, the vendors are still there to make money. So they should still have to pay the fee, whether it's the one-day ten-dollar fee or whatever, whichever option they choose.
Bruce, Claire has a question on the Zoom.
Yeah, please, Claire.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Todd, so would this, with the organizers trying in the information, would this also apply to nonprofits like the Bull Mansion or the Heritage Museum if there is organizers for events there? Because right now, the ordinance states that they're exempt from this license requirement.
There are some exemptions within the ordinance that naturally would still apply. I don't think anybody's suggesting that we remove those. But in the case where the exemptions don't apply, the plan, at least as it was discussed after the agenda was prepared, was that the vendors themselves would have to pay the license.
Okay, so even in the case that if they're doing an event at a nonprofit location, like the museum?
Unless they meet the exemptions, they're already in there themselves.
Let me ask you, Todd.
Okay.
Todd, would.
Okay.
Claire, can you finish?
Yeah, go ahead, Danny.
Would the Boy Scouts, when they do their front door food collection, you hang a bag on your front door, does that fall under the peddler or the vendor? Or neither?
That would be, that would be a peddler. Anything that's going door-to-door is considered a peddler or a solicitor. It's all semantics, really. Anyone who's at a fixed location on somebody else's property is generally considered a transient retailer.
Have the Boy Scouts in past years contacted you about this, or is this something that occurs every year?
Now, the, the, the Boy Scouts, the Boy Scout troop masters have always been very good every year.
Okay.
Contacted me well in advance of the events that they do to find out if there's anything they have to do to the township. And through discussions with the scout masters, we settled on the process that I described earlier, where they, they provide us the information, we issue one, you know, one license that covers everybody, so long as we have a list of everybody that's participating, we don't charge a fee.
And they have scouts running all of the township?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Just a quick thing. First on the scouts, scouts is not peddlers, and they're not merchants. They're providing a public service. They're filling up the food banks. So as far as that goes, just having a list of who's on there, I think is all that's required. But anyway, in, in answer to these three things and where we want to go from here, I'm comfortable with all of them. The only thing I would, I would question, and I'm going to use Memorial Day as a, as a, an example, why can't we have, instead of, you know, going through all that paperwork and you getting a stack of paperwork, why can't we have a, if you're more than, say, I don't know, twenty-five vendors, that you can put a roster together? That the organizer of the event gets, lists all of them with all the critical information you need, and they have to submit it two or three weeks before the event. And anybody that comes in after you submit it, you have so much time when the event's over, just to send the rest of them. I think if we added that to this, I think we would solve a lot of our problems.
So let me ask a question, Frank. If we did the roster thing that you're discussing, so the event organizer would submit a list of all the vendors that they're expecting.
All the information you.
And then the vendors would still have to submit the license to us?
Why would they have to submit?
Well, we would still have to issue a license to each individual vendor.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. Let's have, let's have, if you have more than, say, twenty-five vendors, that roster acts as, as the information we need to give to the police.
Go to the organizer and say, who are these?
Giving away our police powers again.
No.
I don't want this police power thing. I'm passing it by.
No, I don't think so. I think that as long as we have the information to protect the people, that if a vendor's bad at that event, we have their, that contact information of that vendor. That's what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm saying for large events, why not just have a roster that the event chairman hands in, and that becomes the permit for that event, for the vendor.
I think he's saying, making them responsible to get the information of their vendors, address telephone numbers, and then if there's an issue, then it, then it can be reported.
Memorial Day, it'll be John Wayne, right? He would submit that?
Whoever, Jeff, John Wayne, whoever.
I don't like that idea, because it puts an additional workload on the organizer, and things could fall through the cracks. I just think it should happen here. We should have the records right here of everything. And it's not a big deal. It's going to be, take a few minutes with this, you know, online. And it's just, if, if you, if you're motivated enough to come be a vendor at a show, what's a few more minutes to, and a ten bucks to, to do it? And I just think that's kind of getting a little off track. If we're going to make an exception here, an exception there, just, just let it happen all, right, right to the township.
Bruce, Claire has another comment online.
Claire, please.
I agree. I think that, I mean, I like the idea of having, like, an umbrella permit for events that have more than twenty-five vendors, but I think it might get confusing for some people, especially out-of-town people who aren't used to this kind of license, to have to have a permit for events that are under twenty-five when they're doing events in the township, and then all of a sudden, they don't have to have the permit. So I, I personally, as a, as a local artist who does shows like this, I'm in favor of the simpler, more straightforward, consistent solution that Amy pointed out with the, like, the one-year option for fifty dollars. It, it would be great if the renewal would not have a fee, first of all, because of the information's already processed in the system. So theoretically, it shouldn't take much more time to renew it or effort. And also, I think that would, in, you know, Todd, you were talking about how if people apply for this license, like a few days before the event, you're going to get bogged down trying to process that. I think if you had this annual option of renewal for no fee, that would encourage people to choose the annual license option. And then you wouldn't be as bogged down, because they would already have had that license for, as the annual license option. Does that make sense? So I, I would, yeah, I would be completely in favor of that option, especially the annual license and no fee or very minimal fee to renew it, to encourage that, since people are doing these shows throughout the year, and they're going to probably come back and do the same shows the next year.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with you with one caveat. I think, I think the fifty-dollar or forty-five-dollar, more expensive licenses, I think either not charging a renewal fee or charging a very minimal renewal fee makes some sense. I think, I think allowing for renewal of a one-day license is, is not something that's very feasible, because you're paying ten dollars for one-year license, and then three hundred and sixty-four days later, you're going to want a new license and not have to pay anything for it. But there obviously is some cost in generating a new license, even if it's just paper and ink and staff time doing that. So I, I think, I think the more expensive licenses are prime examples of when we wouldn't necessarily charge a renewal fee or do a cheap one. But I don't, and we talked about this in the office last week, the one-day licenses, I don't think they should be renewable. If you're going to be doing it more than one day, get a, get a longer-term license.
Yeah, I was just referring to the one-year license, really, because having no renewal fee would really encourage people just to get it done. And then it's in the system, and there won't be any confusion in the future, like, oh, I forgot to apply for my license. I could do it last minute, the day of the show. And, yeah, I, I really like that idea. And I think a lot of the local artists would be in favor of that.
And maybe we could look at just.
And I would also echo your, your statement that it makes sense to be consistent on how these are done with larger events. If, if there's one thing that's extremely important, particularly when you go to court with ordinance enforcement, is you have to be able to demonstrate that the processes you follow are consistent. And if we are making exceptions here and there for whatever reason, unless the reason is well articulated and it's not arbitrary, you're not very successful in court usually. So if there is a legitimate reason or reasons why events like Memorial Day should be treated differently, I think the court supervisors would have to indicate what those reasons are in ordinance in order to make it legitimate, in order to make it consistent with the rest of the regulation.
Can I ask a question? Are there other days except Memorial Day in Harris Township for artists like you?
Museum?
Museum.
Yeah, is that a question for me?
Yes. Yes, Claire.
Yeah, so, well, there was people's choice, but that's.
Yeah, that's.
So that was exempt. But there's, you know, University Wine Company is the, is an example, but also the Bull Mansion, there are events, there's events, the new brewery going in. I'm sure we'll want to do more events, because having vendors and artists come in and set up booths, it draws people in. And so it's really good for local businesses to have those events and bring awareness. And it's also good for local artists, too, especially after COVID. You know, we're looking for ways to get our names up there. And so, yeah, I mean.
And I understand sort of determine is, when you do how many in Harris Township? One day, or half year, or a year, or something, and get a license for that period?
Could you repeat the question? Sorry.
I'm saying, if an artist decides they're going to do five or six shows in a half-year period, then we want to get a fifteen-dollar license and finish it for over a year.
Right. Right. I mean, in my case, I, I do try to plan ahead. A lot of shows require that you.
A lot of shows require that you apply very far in advance, but there's also pop-ups that might happen, like, a week before the actual event. So I think most artists, at least locally, will opt into the one year just to cover themselves. Because it doesn't make sense, you know, to pay for the six months, and then it's not renewed, and then you have to pay for it again if something comes up.
Well, that makes sense. I think the, I think we do want to charge a fee for renewal, just to make it a formal process. But let's, you know, make it minimal.
Right, and we could also think about if the information isn't changing, maybe we don't charge a fee if they're not changing their information. But if their information is changing, something on that license has to change, then Todd has to do, I don't know, Todd's shaking his head at me.
I think, I don't think something like $10 is a burden.
Right.
If you're in business and you can't afford $10, you're not in business.
Todd agrees with that.
$10 is reasonable.
I think that number three, we need to clarify a little bit better by what we're meaning. For now, we're talking about vendors and organizations, and whether the vendors are making a profit or something. So I think the wording on that needs to be more clear and reflect what Todd was saying.
Well, and that doesn't actually need to go in the ordinance itself. That, I don't think, Todd, right? That non-profit thing? Do you think we need...
I think, I think work up something for us, and let's take a look at it. Are we all, we all good on that?
Let's go.
Okay, we'll get that on the agenda.
This is the first time we've talked about this.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yep.
Well, I didn't want to end without saying thank you to Todd and Amy and all of you supervisors for addressing the concerns and thoughts, not just by me, but other community members, and really taking the time to research and discuss these changes. Yeah, I think this is really positive change and will encourage more events in the future.
Well, thank you. We try.
Most interesting. I don't think we've ever talked about this in my tenure.
We just talked about it three months ago.
Yep, okay.
How we started it, though.
Let's move on to Norwich Boulevard.
Okay, we have a gentleman on the Zoom, Mr. Eric Nab. Eric, if you're still awake, it's getting late, I know. Oh, good, Eric's with us. Okay, so I will, thanks, Eric. I'll introduce this. In 2021, the township worked with Eric Nab at 100 Aspen Drive to address a concern with the paved pull-off area on Norwich Boulevard. Pull-off area was located right after you enter Aspen Heights from Linden Hall Road and was on the side of Mr. Nab's property. I did put a little map for you in the packet. It had become a frequent spot for people to park. Mr. Nab asked if he would be allowed to establish grass in the area at his expense. After we researched the plans for the development, we found that that pull-off actually did not serve any intended purpose. It wasn't a school bus pull-off, it wasn't a future Catawba bus stop, and there wasn't an easement there of any type. So we advised him that he could move forward with his plan, and he could get a permit, which he did, to get the work completed. So he changed that from a paved area to a grass area. He called a few weeks ago and said he's still having issues with people parking in the pull-off area. He said they're parking now on his newly established grass. Additionally, he has a baby with a room on that side of the house, and the vehicle's using the pull-off or disrupting the baby's sleep. He said the vehicles parking are mainly landscaping companies and others that are doing business in the neighborhood. So Mr. Nab has asked about the process to establish a formal no parking area just in that little pull-off area. He's hoping that if the parking is officially restricted, vehicles will no longer use the area. I will say that the resident that lived there before, Dan Bright, they used to put planters out, which were problematic for us with snowplowing, but they put planters in the pull-off area because people were parking there. I did put a map in your agenda packet. If you're amenable to this, we just need to advertise an amendment to our no parking ordinance to add that location. Mr. Nab is on the Zoom if you have any questions for him or if there's anything he would like to say.
Is that quick? Is that hard right away?
Yes.
I was by there today. I happened to drive by there today, and I saw you have some stakes up with some yellow tape. I don't know why people wouldn't even think about parking there. First off, it's, I think it's too close to the stop sign.
And there's a stop sign there.
You know, there's so many feet back. What, Nigel, you would know that, how many feet back it is?
15.
15 feet. And I'm thinking that thing's very close to that.
It's a boulevard, doesn't it?
Yeah, so I would, I would say, let's do the no parking. I agree with it. You shouldn't need to park there.
Hey, I want to thank Amy and all the supervisors for taking this up. We feel the same way. I just had that re-seated, and that's when they put those stakes up. And, you know, I had some stakes put in last year, some of these trucks just ran right over. I've actually gone up and, you know, I don't want to stay confronted, but had to speak with people. It's just becoming problematic. You know, I don't want to get into arguments, and as I said, a lot of these cars are facing their bathroom and bedroom, so it's disconcerting when you get out of the shower and there's a truck sitting there, and you're thinking, what's happening here? So I am glad you guys are taking out this request. Thank you for doing it so swiftly. And the one thing I wanted to add was, I don't know if it's possible, but I, you know, my wife and I thought maybe if there's something in addition to the no parking, for example, violators will be towed, violators will be fined, that might help. You have the message. It just seems like it's, for whatever reason, people just are drawn to parking that area. And at this point, we're just, you know, under $5,000, and, you know, getting that whole area ran, so.
People probably have historically parked there, so it's going to take something to change them.
Yeah, and honestly, what we can do is, after you approve, after we would approve the ordinance amendment, I can have State College Police keep an eye on that area and make sure they take it.
Yeah.
And that's the only way people are going to stop parking there. It's not going to take a sign, it's going to take getting a ticket. That's what happens with the snow emergencies, too. Once somebody gets a ticket, they learn.
I go by two or three times a day, so I don't know what he's talking about.
Let's do it.
We're okay with it?
Yep.
Anybody good?
You miss it, bud?
Well, the only problem is, where are they going to park?
The people that are parking there now aren't people that live there.
But they serve as here, do we need to find a place so they can park?
They can park near the street.
They can park on the street.
Like, they can pull off.
Stay in the caddy.
I told the landscapers, they could park right in front of our yard on the street. Most of them do anyways on the, on Aspen Drive. I said, I don't mind if you park right in front of the house, just don't block the driveway. You can pull off to the side, like, most of them do that stuff.
Everyone there is a landscaper.
Yeah, well, we also, we also can reach out to the HOA as well, once we make that change, so let them know, so they can let the landscape companies know. So if you're okay with it by consensus, I'll go ahead and get the advertisement done for May.
No objections?
Nope.
Okay, moving. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Route 45 Getaways.
All right, so Ferguson Township Supervisor Laura Denini reached out to the township to see if we may be interested in becoming a partner on the Route 45 Getaway Program. The program, which promotes tourism initiatives along the Route 45 corridor from Milheim to Pine Grove Mills, is funded through a grant from the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. Milheim Borough and Ferguson Township were the initial partners on the program. The event in 2021 showcased the many businesses and unique finds along the Route 45 corridor, including several in Harris Township. Ms. Denini set a group, a goal of the group in 2022 is to expand its outdoor recreation component. According to Ms. Denini, the organizers aren't looking for a financial commitment from the township, though that is certainly welcomed. Rather, they are looking for the township to help grow the initiative through outreach to its local agricultural and business community and promotion of events in the area. The township would also be welcome to attend the monthly organizing meetings. And I did give you the link for some more information on the program and the email from Ms. Denini about what the program is and what we're being asked to do.
My only comment is that while we're not including Potter Township as ingrained fair property, has shows going on almost every weekend.
So that might be a good suggestion, that we could respond back to...
Potter has more activity going on than we do.
Well, we can respond back to Laura with that suggestion, to Ms. Denini.
Yeah. I think they would probably agreeable to it. Pardon?
You want to be our rep on that committee?
I'd be, I should, I'd join.
Heard that here?
So we'd like to do it, and we'd like Deni to be our rep.
There you go.
What's the, what's the, he's carving out that Potter Township would join us.
By default.
Okay.
Okay. Frank will be the backup.
No, he won't.
We're not doing that to this group. Okay.
All right, good. Moving on. Contract 22-03 Bolzberg Pike Phase 1 paving project.
2022 operating budget includes $80,000 to pave the Bolzberg Pike from Kimport Avenue to the entrance at Nittany View Park. This is the first phase in a multi-year project that will see the Pike entirely repaved. The remainder of the work will be completed in 2023 and 2024 after the State College Borough Water Authority completes their waterline project. Bids for the project were open on April 1st. A low bid in the amount of $77,520 was submitted by HRI. A bid tab and a memo from the township engineer was included in the packet.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award contract 22-03 Bolzberg Pike Phase 1 paving to HRI incorporated in the amount of $77,520.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're moving right along. Contract 22-3 Academy Street Stormwater Project.
It's actually 2202. I screwed up.
All right.
The 2022 operating budget includes $60,000 to replace 317 linear feet of pipe and three inlets at the top of South Academy Street. Bids for this project were open on April 1st. The lowest bid submitted was for $99,729.50 from EB Paving and Construction. After we reviewed the bids, it became apparent that the cost of the pipe was problematic and was driving a large increase in the project. Township Engineer Jerry Northridge spoke directly with Core in Maine, which used to be Catalone Pipe, which is a CoStars-approved pipe vendor, who quoted us a price of $104 per linear foot for the pipe, bringing the total for the pipe down to $37,449.30. That's a lot cheaper than what was in the bid tab, if you look at the bid tab. I spoke with PennDOT Municipal Services Representatives, who confirmed that the township could purchase the pipe off of CoStars and then rebid the project with just the installation of the pipe, the inlets and the paving. And this is similar to what we're doing with the Mary Elizabeth Street project, where we're purchasing the structure off of CoStars to save time on the fabrication and hopefully the costs. So we'd recommend that you reject the bids for this project, and then, we actually have two options for completing the project. We'd order the pipe, and then, the top part of the project was just done. Columbia Gas just put a gas line in up there. Columbia Gas has to restore the area anyway. Our crews could install that one section of pipe and one inlet. We could actually, PennDOT said it would be okay for us to get a quote from their contractor to do the base paving, and then have them take care of the topping up there, and then we would just bid out the lower part of the project. It's a lot, but it's, we got to get creative.
Now, I only have one question. Does the pipe, does that include the stormwater inlets? When we order that 37, or is that a total different?
That's different. It's just the pipe.
Just the pipe.
So we're item 6601, $76,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
Down to 37.
Down to 37.
$40,000?
So... $99,007, how much was pipe?
That would, no, that was the whole project, but the pipe was the main cost of that.
76?
Yeah, 76 down to 37.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks. That sounds like it'll do it.
So it's like a no-brainer to reject and then let us...
76, that's very stupid.
We can't just agree to us buy that, keep this bid, let us buy the pipe.
We have to reject those bids, and then we'll just rebid it.
Interesting, because everybody's going to know what everybody else bid. That's going to get interesting.
Well, we've been, I mean, I think we'll get better prices taken in pipe out of the equation. The paving is still expensive. Asphalt prices are through the roof right now, but...
Okay.
Motion move to reject contract 22-...
02.
02. Can I get a second? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Contract is rejected. Resolution 22-08.
Center Bike has asked the board to consider designating May as Bike-to-Work Month, and May 16 through the 22nd as Bike-to-Work Week, and May 20th as Bike-to-Work Day, and Center Region Spring Bike Anywhere Friday.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion. I'll come with that second.
Deni, that was a bad joke.
Let's do it this way. All those in favor, Eric, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, thank you. Let's think about if there's more that we can do in the township to support biking in our community.
Okay.
Not anything we have to do today, but let's, let's...
Put a bike lane on 322.
I will bring, I will bring that up during my manager's report, actually, in 2:00 AM.
Okay. Request to use the Bolzberg Fire Police.
Pennsylvania Native Plant Society is requesting the use of the Bolzberg Fire Police for the Central PA Native Plant Festival and sale at the Bull Mansion from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for traffic control on May 7th.
Okay. Discussion available?
Make a motion and a question.
Motion?
I'll second it.
Second?
Discussion. Are we exiting traffic onto Bull Avenue or the church? Can we suggest they come down church and not have to exit onto Bull Avenue? You probably, you guys are in charge of it, so.
That would be my suggestion.
One-way in and make the loop coming out. Get them to the traffic signal.
Sounds good. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Managers' report?
Okay, I just have a couple of things to highlight. First, I got an email from Mary Durstein from Pine Tree Avenue about an anti-bias coalition that's being started in the Center Region. Coalition has representation from elected officials and residents from across the region. Included information in my manager's report in more detail about what they're trying to do. They would like the township to have representation. I don't know if you want to have them come and give a presentation at your next meeting so you can hear more about what's going on, or if you want to appoint a representative.
What is a DEI?
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I don't know what that means.
So in Half Moon Township now, and in College Township, they have on their standing agenda, a standing agenda item for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then, like, in the one Half Moon Township meeting, they had someone who gave a presentation on a Civil War cemetery that had some, some component to the Underground Railroad or something.
What?
I don't know. I've watched it twice.
Ford, I'd find out more about this, but I never heard of this.
So I looked, and, I mean, I'll send you the information from her, but, and then I can invite someone to come to your next meeting.
Interesting. I don't know who this...
There's people, it's, like, Betsy Whitman's the rep in Patton Township. There's an elected official from, everybody but Half Moon Township.
Everybody's in Half Moon Township.
No, everybody but Half Moon Township has an elected official that's a rep to this.
Except us.
They just approached us. We weren't approached till now.
Well, I don't know.
I'll send you the email, and then you can take a look at it. How about that?
Sure.
Okay. Just, yeah, one other thing. Gert Aaron...
Oh, okay. You should work first to mention your name, but that's okay.
What? How to mention your name?
Well, it's kind of a surprise-type thing, but...
Okay. Gert Aaron sent me a lovely email today. He's doing well. That's all I'm going to say. We'll move on.
But, yes, okay.
Okay, I will, I will make the thing, as far as number three goes, I do believe we should do something there.
Do it.
And I think we should go ahead and do what's there.
We're going to do it. It's already being done.
Done.
Okay.
So, you're okay with all the components of number three?
Yep.
Yep.
And more if we need it.
Yes, more if we need it.
Okay, perfect.
Do a certificate. Mary Elizabeth Culvert project.
Um, I'm trying to get the occasional flow easement recorded through the county, and that's been a bit of a nightmare. And then, the structure, they're.
Occasional easement flow?
We have to get an occasional flow easement through DEP because the.
Through the stream?
Yeah, because the, when we put the new structure in, it, the flowage might change by an inch or two. And so, we have to get it recorded, and then, we have to get individual easements with property owners. It's like a chicken and an egg situation, and it's just been a headache. Uh, but I think we finally got that figured out. We're moving on. And then, speaking to Bruce's Biking, um, the official MAP Subcommittee, which is three members of the Planning Commission, three members of the Parks and Rec Committee, are actually putting together a survey that we're gonna send out to residents in the township to ask people where they're biking and where they're walking, and what recreational networks they're using, so we can make sure we're capturing those on the new official MAP update. And we're gonna use a heat, survey software that gives like a heat map, so we'll see where people are responding from and where they're going and what they're doing. So, we think this is pretty cool. Mark found some examples from, like, Miami, Florida, where they asked, like, what are your impediments to biking? What are your impediments to walking? So.
All right. I see we got nine, almost nine thousand back from the State College Police. Keep behaving yourselves, people.
We used to get twenty-five thousand back. We used to get twenty thousand back. And we were only spending three hundred thousand, now we're spending five hundred thousand and getting eight thousand back.
Okay.
Okay, um, good. Anything else on the manager's report, anybody? Very good, okay. Approval vouchers. Somebody?
Vouchers, uh, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Comments? Thoughts? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Okay. Cog committee reports. First one is Executive Committee, and I will defer that to our vice chair, who attended for me.
Who will defer it to Bud, who attended for me.
Oh, my goodness, that's right, I did, son of a gun.
How'd you like that?
Well done.
I don't remember. Well, we just met, and I think on the agenda is gonna be, I forget what it is.
There was something we.
Yeah, it was something we brought up, like.
What did we bring up? Danny, do you remember?
I, I, I thought I took a go to the meeting, but Bud jumped in and I couldn't go, so.
All right, well, let me, let me, let me bring something up that's gonna be. I've asked to have on our next agenda place an item where the executive committee starts to consider, how the cog is gonna look like post-COVID pandemic as we move into the endemic phase. We've been through a lot, we've, we've learned some things, you know? And I think we need to start talking about where we've been, where we are, and how we're gonna look in the future. So, I'm gonna ask not to take action at this next meeting, but to start the discussion, bring it back to each of the municipalities and have our own thoughts, and then, bring it forward again and start looking at the future. So, just let you know that's coming up and start, start the wheels turning in your minds.
Um, and I will say that Mr. Norenberg, on our manager's call on Thursday, brought this up, and he said, oh, we're thinking about trying to, ways that we can encourage people to come back to the general forum meetings, which, you know, we really.
Cancel Zoom.
Kinda have to go. But he did ask me, I, I brought up about the bill that the state legislature is looking at about remote meetings, and he did ask me to get some more information. So, I got some information on that from Amy Sturgis at the league.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we're, you know, we're social animals, and there's a difference between being in the same room and being on Zoom, so.
Bud remembered. I, I remember what the, one of the things that was discussed at the executive committee was the starting time for the trash pickup. And that was decided that there's no action needed, that is just gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna start at six o'clock from May first to Labor Day.
That was corporation-driven.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, next item, Parks Caval Committee did not meet. Parks Governance Committee has been, has an ongoing discussion on essentially what the authority's acts is the authority may do or may not do, and what the bylaws say that the authority may do or may not do. And then, we're gonna move on from there to a discussion about what do we want the authority to be doing and, and, and other associated cog committees. Center Region Parks Authority. As part of the, um, comprehensive plan study, they recommended that we look at our park staffing. And the agency got money from, uh, from the state to fund a study of staffing. And one of the ladies who was our consultant did a staffing study. It's an excellent study. It points out a lot of needs, it's, it's well rationalized. It's expensive.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. It's, their current suggestions are on the order of an additional four hundred thousand dollars in next year's budget. Another additional four hundred thousand dollars in the, in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. That's eight hundred thousand dollars for those that are keeping track. There is, that's the first phase, phase two and three over the next several years following that. I haven't seen exact numbers, but it would probably, we're talking a total of one point some million dollars increase in the park budget if we do all of this. It's not.
No, we're, we're definitely behind schedule, I agree.
Okay, so, so, one of the things I put, asked the agency, I was like, look, that's, there's some sticker shock there. You're gonna need a business plan. And certainly, parks are not a business, government's not a business, it's not a for-profit organization. But there are, um, there are people that are unable to get into park programs. There, there's waiting lists, and there's people that are on the waiting list because they've given up trying to get on the waiting list. There's, um, grants and stuff, and our park agency's done a fabulous job of, of soliciting grants from the state and also from private entities. If they had a full-time grants person, they could probably do more. So, return on investment.
Tried to do that previously, but it, it failed, we tried.
So, so, it, it's coming, but it's gonna be, and I know, I think Finance has already seen it.
No, not yet.
Not yet, you will.
Maybe March, maybe Thursday.
Human Resources has seen it.
Maybe Thursday.
Um, so, and, and as I've said, I've asked the agency, I said, we need to put together a rationale in order to make people understand, and there's, there's other good reasons. There's things like, um, public service, like children that need to be taught water safety and have swimming lessons. It's a plan, it's not gonna pay for itself, but, but we don't have enough people to offer swimming lessons and water safety lessons to our children. So, these are the kinds of things that are, that are in there.
Way late in trying to get a park underway, we've, we've probably let a lot of this stuff slip by.
Yeah.
Over the years, we've got about it.
So, but it, but it's, just again, it's gonna be, it's a, it's a big-ticket item. Okay, um, let's see, MPO.
Did not meet.
Oh, those are good, good ones, aren't they? Facilities Committee.
Okay, Facilities Committee, we met, a couple of things. We had an update on Whitehall Regional Park and Millbrook Marsh Nature Center, Phase Two. Uh, Mr. Ed Bell has been hired to be the project manager on both those, similar to what we did with Mr. Snitzer for our maintenance building. So, have somebody to oversee it and keep it going from, in, and oversee the, uh, the contractors and make sure they get what they need to keep things going. Uh, in, in kind of the same vein as what Mr. Lord just said, uh, this, the, the improvement planning process and the capital budget. Uh, we, we've got the assessments done, and that is heading forward to the, we'll be going to the Finance Committee. Uh, basically, that's about five percent of the budget. And, you know, one of the things that we, we've talked about, we've done all this, and I'm sure some of you that have been in business, one of the hardest things to be disciplined to do is to fund depreciation, and that's basically what we're doing here. You know, putting money aside for future needs to replace roofs or windows or whatever. So, that's gonna be coming through to you. The one thing that came out of this meeting that was a discussion that, you know, I felt like I was Rod Sterling. I think, you know, the old Twilight Zone. Uh, cog building ownership transfer. That was brought up to us, and the way it was, uh, it was, they're, they're taking that, when we said for them to look into that process, uh, they're telling us that they're gonna have the documentation for us in May to look at and get it to the general forum so it can be transferred in September. Now, I was under the impression that we were looking at this because we knew it was coming up in twenty-six, twenty-eight, whatever, and that we wanted to try to get it done before then. I didn't know we were moving that fast. And I made that comment and kinda got looked at like, oh, yeah, yeah, we really wanna get this done. I'm not sure we're ready to transfer it. I wanna make sure we get everything looked at and make sure that everything's on the right path, but.
I'll talk about that.
Uh, but anyway, that was, that was something that we discussed, but that's what went on at Facilities.
Okay. And Route eighty connector, I'm sorry, State College Area Connector Study?
That's very good. Uh, most of our residents have, have done a very good job of participating. I wanna thank everybody that went to these meetings. Uh, but I think everybody got their, their comments into PennDOT. Now, it's just a matter of whether PennDOT, uh, you know, heats them and, and we can get some things done. In that vein, I also wrote an email to, to Ms. Whitman, uh, from the Climate Action Committee.
I'll, I'll report on that during Climate Action Committee.
Oh, you're gonna, okay, I'll let Bud report on that, go ahead.
No, no, I'll wait until I get to Climate Action Committee.
I will, but I'll let you report on it.
Okay, so, let's do, um, Public Safety.
Did not meet, we canceled.
Good meeting. Human Resources.
Okay, we met last Wednesday, um, pretty long meeting. Uh, we, uh, first thing we did was approve a job description for, uh, a staff assistant for the Regional Fire Protection Program. Um, we voted to a, award a contract for, uh, wage and benefit classification study to, um, Gov HR. That, of course, has to be forwarded to the general forum, be voted on by the entire forum. And that happens to be the same company that assisted us in the executive director search. A good company. And, uh, let's see. Yes, we heard, um, we got a presentation about the Parks and Recreation Staffing Study, so I won't go into that. Um, concern about the CPIU being at seven point five percent. Bud might talk about that, too. Well, it is, and, and if, if, um, the general, if, if we wanna give a raise above five percent, if the CPI is above that, it has to be, um, voted on by the entire general forum to approve that change in the, in the plan.
Oh, you mean for.
And also, we've, um, approved a minor updated salary schedule to take into account, um, uh, increased duties and therefore increased pay for a couple of, uh, positions. And that's it.
Okay. Land Use and Community Infrastructure.
We met April seventh. The two main items are the new, uh, comprehensive plan. Uh, we had an outline of it, it's going to be looking quite different than what we did in two thousand and thirteen. It's more of an integrated model, and you'll be seeing a lot of this in the next couple of months. There'll be a presentation to the, to the forum, uh, I think, in two, two months about that. The, uh, other item was the toolkit that Pam and Mark had put together for, uh, solar programs. And, uh, it will be also presented to the, to the forum. Good, uh, good handouts on both the, particular to the primary-scale solar study. There's a lot of good information in terms of how, how to do things, so that, that's, that's a good one.
And segueing into solar purchasing?
Okay, we, we met, uh, March twenty-third. We did a Zoom meeting. It was a very long meeting, a very detailed meeting, and we, we did basically one, one agenda. I'm talking about, uh, how we proceed. And Friday, I received a, uh, letter from Joe at Cog with some questions that we need to, uh, get input. They, they want the group to put in, get into these, so. I will take a crack at responding to these. The, uh, program, the whole one-hour program is available for anyone that wants to watch it to get an idea of what we're talking about, so. It's, uh, it's gonna be a detailed process to fill this out, so. Do the best I can.
Okay. Bud, you're up, Financing Committee.
We are meeting on Thursday, and here is our agenda.
Oh, you're welcome. We appreciate it.
Uh, let me go through this, um. Basically, we're, we have fund-balance policy, we'll talk about that. Uh, the TASER project, which is, we're accepting credit cards through code, we'll be talking about that. Uh, cog building ownership will come up tomorrow. And, uh, I'm with Frank, I, I don't quite understand it. I don't think we're ready to this. I'm not sure at this point that transferring ownership to ourself, from ourself to ourself, is gonna benefit us at all. I'd like to find out why we wanna do that. I think that we're better off staying the way we are. We are partners in that building, which we still would be, but it'd be a different way of handling it. I'm not sure we, that would benefit the township right now. So, I'm with Frank, I think at this point, we're not ready to, ready to accept that.
The attorneys always make money.
They, they love it, they love it, they love it. So, I'm gonna, so I'm going to go in there with that benefit, with that, uh, attitude that, well, we're not convinced that this is a good thing to transfer ownership to the cog from, from, uh, each individual township, so we'll discuss that.
Yeah, just, just a comment on that to everybody. Uh, one of the things to keep in mind to do that, that will take a, uh, it'll be a, a unit vote, and it'll be, have to be unanimous. So, until we get all our questions answered and, and to our satisfaction, I think we stay on the no side till that happens.
Well, I'm not sure what, what started this, I'm, we have to go back and find out what.
Well, I know what started this.
Why it started, and if, if there's a reason for it, but I don't see a need. What, what, what the downside of it is, that, right now, that is our building. We are ten percent or about owner of that building, and we collect rent from that building. Now, if, if in fact we know we're owned that building, the cog would collect rent, and we'd have, lose control over that, and I'm not sure we want to. Because that's, that's, that helps repay our, whatever the heck we had in the first place.
Well, one of the things, one of the things, too. I, I kinda, I, I, since Facilities Committee had started, and we've talked about the buildings, and since day one of Facilities Committee, all I've heard is, this building's too small. It's not big enough for us, we're growing too much, we need a new building. That's all I've heard for four years or whatever that, that. And I'm not sure that we need a new building, but I think that that's what's pushing this, in, in my opinion.
Well, if that's the case, we'd discuss it. But that, that should have nothing to do with the.
I know it shouldn't.
How the ownership is, how ownership was divided up. I think that we should, but it was, it was a great program set up by, uh, years, well, hell, almost twenty years ago now, right?
Yeah.
And it, it's worked well, and I, I think we need to keep that same model in, in place. I guess that's basically mostly what we're gonna, what we're gonna talk about.
All right, Climate Action, Sustainability?
We had a, we had our meeting at noon today, uh, and, uh, interesting. We had two things presented to us. Uh, one of them was, the nice thing was that, um, uh, there is a I C L E I com- organization, I think it's municipal organizations, that are offering grants to municipalities or to nonprofits, uh, to, to spend. I believe it's, it's several hundred thousand dollars, and we're gonna apply for that. And it's gonna be, it's gonna, has to go to nonprofits through the, through the, uh, cog. And there's like six or eight nonprofits that there are available, that, like, uh, to the housing and everything else. So, that, that, if that money is gonna be great, that's, that's, that may be a million dollars, I think, if I remember correctly what that is. That, they found that. The other thing we talked about was we were asked to endorse resolution, uh, what was it? It was the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of two thousand and twenty-one, and it was resolution, I have it here, but bear with me here. Resolution, uh, well, it doesn't matter what it is. Twenty, uh, well, it, it, it was just introduced, so we were asked to endorse it. It's resolution, I don't even remember what it is. It was just introduced, and we were asked to endorse it. I read through this, uh, a little bit. Uh, I don't, I didn't understand all of it, but, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about it. The way it was presented to us and what I read in this resolution don't match.
Did it come from the state, Bud?
It comes from, this is, this is Congress.
From the Citizens Climate Lobby.
Oh. It came, it comes from, it's, it was introduced in Congress. And I don't know why I have my, my bullet, church bulletin here, but I guess I can read that. Would it read a church bulletin?
No doubt.
I thought it was organized. I think they gave me two bullets, and I didn't wanna make sure I got it.
What does it do? I don't care about the.
Well, we're, well, you do not care about the numbers, it's a Senate bill, and it is a tax on oil or a tax on several people. Uh, mostly oil, natural gas, that type of thing. It's, it's a, it's a fee, it's not a tax. It's fifteen dollars per cubic square foot or something, plus another dollar, plus ten more dollars. But it's presented to us as a gender, as, as revenue-neutral, which means that the state, the state, the federal government's gonna collect money from the municipality, from, uh, oil companies, and they're gonna give it to, give to each citizen over nineteen, is gonna get a full share, and anyone under nineteen is gonna get a half a share. It's gonna be divided up to the citizens. And, don't look at me like that. It's, it's gonna be divided to the, by the Social Security Administration is gonna do this. Though it is not, certainly not gender-neutral, because it's a ten percent fee and at least administrative fees all the way through there. And it's unclear whether they're gonna declare dividends, it's unclear what dividends are gonna be, it's unclear how much money they're gonna collect on this and where that money's gonna go once it goes into the government. One of the things they suggested is studying biomass fuel. Uh, so, it is, so I, I voted no, I was the only one to vote no. Uh, so it's gonna be presented at the general forum, and we can make a decision there if you want.
So, I got an email from Pam Adams this afternoon.
Oh, but you did.
And Pam Adams said, there was some confusion, but my sense from the end of the conversation was that the Climate Action Committee representatives should report back to their board's council and consider whether to make it a future agenda item to discuss at the board council level.
Oh, okay.
Sylvia Neely from Citizens Climate Lobby is happy to attend. If you want to coordinate with her about attending a board or council.
Well, I didn't, we didn't know, yes.
Your municipal feedback and/or action will be an indicator of how the Climate Action Committee should proceed at its May or June meeting regarding this item on a regional level.
Well, there's, there's a couple of... My question, can I have a question here? My question is, are we the Center Region Council of Governments or the United States Council of Governments? Because if, if it's, we're talking about the Center Region, let's do what we can do in the Center Region.
Well, this, this does impact the Center Region. I'm, I assume, well, what, one thing, one thing that kind of bothers me, we have organizations coming, and they want to use us as their spokesperson, which is okay. This, if, once we digest this and everybody reads it, I think we'll be okay. But it, there's, one of the things they're presenting that's gonna create 2.1 million jobs. Nothing in that rule, in that bill that I read says anything about creating any jobs. I think the only jobs it's gonna create are more government jobs to collect this money. The word was it, they're already, they're already infrastructureally ready to do that, but I don't know. And it, it doesn't say, the budget agency hasn't looked at it yet, so how much it's gonna cost. So we don't know. It, it's, it's way, way too early. It's been submitted. It may not even make it in committee or out of committee. There were ninety-five supporters of this, and what Mr. Buck pointed out was that when this, this started in 2018, the same thing, and the original bill had some bipartisan on it, had said, had bipartisan support on that, but it died. This one has no, is all one-sided. Ninety-five only on one side of the aisle. And I looked at that, and this is tied to ninety-five other bills, something like, one of them is, is reparations for slavery. Another one is, is something about ALS. Another one has something to do with COVID. So it goes on down the list. So, I think, I didn't want us to go ahead and say, oh, this is a warm and fuzzy thing. Let's just endorse it and forget about it, because that's probably what will happen. But I think we need to discuss this type of thing. And I, I am not, I'm not against a carbon tax or carbon fund. I think we should have some sort of carbon fund, but that money probably should be used for certain research and development, for certain, even to say, how can we burn oil and gas better, natural gas better? How can we do everything better, rather than give it back to the citizens? It's like, it's like a Robin Hood thing. We steal it from the oil companies, and we give it to the people that, that don't pay. I don't know how that's gonna work. So I was, I was against it. I'm willing to have lots of conversation. There's probably some good parts in this bill, but my sense is, Peter Buck, it's not gonna go anywhere anyhow. So, there's where we stand on that. Okay. Any, any questions? No. Oh, 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 I did. Thank you for reminding me, Frank. Thank you.
That's why I deferred it to you.
I did, I, I introduced this as an agenda item to discuss, and it has to do with the connector, the I-80 Connector project. And I says, I mentioned the fact that we have two thousand trucks a day coming through the Center Region, and, and they, they give off CO2 and whatever gases they give off. And it, it makes sense if they would go, and I think sixty percent of those are headed for a, so it made sense that we'd go the seven-mile route, go the twenty-two-mile route. So, they talked about it, discussed it, and Pam wasn't, her, Bill, because she wasn't sure how much emissions they had. Tom Zilla gave us some information. He said in that, in the report, there's something, but they threw it back to us to formulate, they threw it back to us to formulate something. So if we want to work at it, we can.
Well, I, I wrote, I wrote an email to Betsy Whitman, and the one thing I said is, if you go seven miles versus twenty-two for a truck, that's sixty-six percent less greenhouse gases.
Yeah.
And since we just put a climate action plan out to reduce greenhouse gases by 2030 and 2050, that's right in line with what we want to do. So why wouldn't the Climate Action Committee or the cog write a letter to PennDOT supporting the shorter route?
Well, they, they aren't ready to do that because they don't have enough information.
They're not a climate action committee. They're a good guy.
Okay. H R 2307, in case you guys are, I'll look that up.
I wrote that down. Heritage Museum.
We're opening April 24th. I believe that's a Saturday. Is that right?
Sunday.
Sunday. Oh, well, maybe it is Sunday. And we are gonna be open for the summer. As Claire alluded to, we probably have at least one activity down there in the summer. Certainly we'll have something during the Memorial Day. So keep, stay tuned. Stay tuned.
Are you gonna do the soup cooking?
No soup. No soup for you.
No soup for you.
What we thought went something, other thing, but we're not quite sure what to do yet.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause?
I move adjourned.
I want to ask Amy, how is the revaluation of the new windows going for the building here? We had, we had talked about it and sort of dropped it, and Donnie was gonna get some estimates and...
So, yes, we had talked about it back in the fall, and then we happened to have someone who's an expert on building materials, who's on this Board of Supervisors, who has offered to take me window, offered to take me window shopping on a Friday, so we're gonna do that at some point.